Okay, thank you everyone for joining us. It is 5:34 and I'll call to order our Tuesday, August 15th, 2023 Meeting of the City of Saco Planning Board. My name is Alyssa Boutat. I'm the Chair of our Board. Board members with me this evening include Matt DiCiani, Joyce Leary-Clark, Rob Biggs, and Glenn Sharet. Matt Prevensel and Jeff Grossman are absent this evening. We have our City Council Liaison Joe Gunn with us and we have city staff including our City Planner Emily Cole Prescott and Lisa Harmon, our Planning Coordinator. We will first review our August 1st meeting minutes. Board members, any questions, comments, or edits on those?
Madam Chair, I move to approve the July of, rather, the August 1st meeting minutes as presented.
Thank you for the motion, Joyce. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you for the second, Glenn. Any further discussion?
There's Rob.
Oh, sorry, Rob.
They're twins.
You sound like Glenn. Rob with the second. Any further discussion? Not hearing any. I'll call for a vote, starting with Matt D.
Yes.
Joyce?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Glenn?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes as well. Motion passes 5-0. Okay, the first item on our regular agenda this evening is a site plan review for a facility upgrade for the Saco Water Resource Recovery Project. This is 62 to 68 Front Street, which is tax map 31, Lot 178 in the Downtown Zoning District. Emily is pulling up this application on our screen and we will start with a staff overview on this.
Thank you. This application is culmination of many years of work on the City of Saco's part. It's a review process that really started with a planning initiative, looking at a full resiliency upgrade for the City of Saco Water Resource Recovery Facility back in 2018. Since the '70s, this site has been the wastewater treatment plant for the City of Saco. The upgrade you see before you tonight consists of completely renovating the site, rebuilding, elevating structures to be resilient to sea level rise, including construction of a wastewater tank in place of an existing front street garage, which you'll see in the later pages of my memo. This will bring an innovative wastewater treatment process known as aerobic granular sludge to Saco's wastewater treatment facility. It'll allow Saco to meet anticipated future nutrient limits. It also includes construction of new headworks building, additions and renovations to the administration building, improvements to all aspects of the wastewater treatment process, and with the overall project goal to combat climate change impacts from sea level rise, wet weather events, and flooding. You can see some of these events of flooding and wet weather issues actually on Saco's webpage, sacomaine.org/wrrd. This proposed project will accommodate anticipated community growth. The project includes restoration of green space with opportunities to provide enhancements along the Riverwalk Trail and its 5.31 acre site on Front Street and along the Saco River. The Downtown Zoning District is where this is located, where the municipal uses are permitted, and this is also considered an essential service. We have a little bit of site and project history on there. The Planning Board will remember on March 7th that the project was brought before it for a sketch plan review, where we looked at a video of what the conceptual site will look like in the future. On March 21st, an initial phase approval for tree clearing and demolition of that front street garage was issued by the Planning Board. Tonight, you're asked to look at site plan review standards per Chapter 179. There'll be some other reviews required, as you see listed there, from Saco River Corridor Commission, the DEP, Army Corps, and Wastewater Treatment Plant Licensing for Pollutant Discharge Elimination System. Additionally, it's important to note that this project is under a clean water SRF funding. In November 2021, Saco voters approved a $50 million project bond for this to support this project, and since then, engineering design has been ongoing. The city is under a construction manager at risk process that was approved by a council to move forward. So the plans that you see before you tonight are about 60% to 70% in design. You'll hear a little bit more on that from the applicants. And now is a good time to review the overall project and then move forward with any questions or comments you have. Thank you.
Thank you, Emily. Board members, any questions right now for city staff on the application materials we have in our packet? Okay, not hearing any. Emily, we have one waiver request. Is that right?
That's correct.
Okay, so Board members, at the bottom of page two of this item in our packet, you can see the waiver requests relating to photometrics. Any questions right now for city staff on that request? Not hearing any. I will need a motion on that.
Madam Chair, I move to grant a waiver to submission of a photometric plan per Section 179-4.03m.
I'll second.
Thank you for the motion, Joyce. Thank you for the second, Rob. Any further discussion? Not hearing any. I'll call for a vote on the waiver, starting with Matt D.
Yes.
Joyce?
Yes.
Rob? Glenn? And I'll vote yes as well. Motion passes 5-0. Okay, moving on to application completeness. Any further questions right now for Emily on the materials provided? Not hearing any questions. I'll look for a motion from someone.
I move to find the site plan review application for the Saco Water Resource Recovery Project complete.
Thank you for the motion, Rob. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you for the second, Matt. D, any further discussion? Not hearing any. I'll call for a vote on application completeness, starting with Matt D.
Yes.
Joyce?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Glenn? And I'll vote yes as well. Motion passes 5-0. Okay, Howard, why don't we invite you and your team up and maybe you can add any additional information for us right now?
Yeah, thank you, Alyssa. Thank you, members of the Planning Board. With me tonight, I have Dan Disson. He is Vice President of the Tyne Bond, who are our engineer and owner's representative, and also with us is Eric Demerius. He's doing a lot of the stormwater and site review. And I think at this point, I'm going to turn it over to Dan. We're going to go through a presentation that we did with a public hearing last week, I believe it was, and also be doing with the Saco River Corridor Commission next week. And with that, bring any questions, and I may tag team with Dan on this.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for your time. As Howard said, this is a presentation we did earlier, and we're going to walk right through it so you can get a glimpse of the overall project, its scope, and some of the details that we're currently in the process of designing and working through with the city and all the regulators and all our stakeholders. A quick overview here, just an introduction. We'll talk a little bit about the facility planning that we've been doing so far. The Riverwalk, which I think is of high value to the city, be interested in. The, some building renderings to see what the facilities are intended to look like. The boat launch, which is onsite right next to the facility on Front Street, as well as some stormwater improvements on the site, we're going to touch upon. Can you hear okay? So this started several years ago, as Emily mentioned earlier, and as part of the process, we included an overall approach, which included the community involvement. It's called the AAA Process with EPA, the Augmented Alternatives Assessment that we did in 2020. As part of this visioning, we invited the public to comment in terms of what we're trying to accomplish, as well as provide some feedback and amenities back to the city and the citizens. There's a long list here in your schedule between 2019 and 2023, where we are today in moving this project forward. So there's been a lot of work that's been done to get to where we are today. There's still quite a bit of work left to do as we start contemplating construction. Overall, as a growing city, as well as increased regulations, there's been a significant need for improvements here in Saco. Additionally, is an impact, as you can see in the photo, there are some challenges with the facility operating during extreme wet weather events, as well as high river levels. And including in our goals to increase the capacity of the plant to support that development, as well as increase the quality of the treatment in this process. And that resiliency of the plant, right now, the 100-year elevation is nine feet, and we're looking at elevating all the critical facilities here up to greater than 14 feet. That's a significant endeavor to do in a facility that has to operate 24/7 while we're doing this work. It's extremely complex and includes multidisciplinary design that we've been working through thus far. Just of note, in the growing city piece, there's also an increase in load that we have to treat and return that clean water to the river. Another major goal of this project was to address the stormwater aspects of combined sewer flows. So we're increasing the treatment capacity to capture all that stormwater and treat it to a very high level, then return it to the river as well. That increases the capacity up to 12 MGD from 8 MGD currently, and we also have the ability to store excess CSOs onsite and then treat them after the storm has been, has subsided, or the river has also subsided. So you all familiar with a combined sewer overflow and what that is? This is stormwater that enters into the collection system and that gets transported down to the treatment plant. And when that capacity exceeds the treatment plant, it actually goes over a weir and goes into the river untreated. So this is a major environmental concern. It happens infrequently when it rains, but it does happen.
Years ago, the city actually had nine of these CSOs. We're now down to one. And with this upgrade, we're looking to eliminate or at least turn that into an emergency bypass going forward.
The permit requirement that I mentioned, nitrogen is a prime concern in the estuary that we're dealing with. There is no current permit, but we anticipate there will be, as has been the case in most communities in the South, as well as other places in the Gulf of Maine. So we've accounted for that. And lastly, reduce reliance on chemicals and provide a more environmentally friendly solution in UV disinfection, as opposed to the use of chlorine and bisulfite to disinfect and dechlorinate that effluent. A quick overview of the process itself down at the plant. If you've been down to Front Street, you notice a lot of buildings and a lot of tanks with circular tanks and rectangular tanks. This is all the treatment process that we actually are replacing. This all has to operate while we're building this facility. If you can see, most of the flow comes in two different directions to the plant. It comes down Front Street through siphons, as well as Tappan Valley. That crosses under the power lines and reaches the plant at the headworks. I don't have a pointer, so I won't point, but you can see it labeled on the screen, as well as the different clarifiers and tanks. And lastly, you see the outfall on the bottom left, and that's roughly 100 feet out into the river. There are diffusers, and there's a little buoy out there where that gets discharged. 800 feet? So this is a visioning. This is a site rendering of what we anticipate the final product to look like here. If you look in the back in the plant, towards the top left, you can see a larger building. That is the new treatment process that was described by Emily a little earlier, the aerobic aerated granular sludge technology. It includes a fairly involved area that contains pumps and different treatment units in that process, as well as the tanks that contain the water that will be treated. So in the front of the screen, so that's all the process in the back. In the front of the screen, this is where the public amenities come in that we had included in the AAA Process. And as you can see, that's the Riverwalk as envisioned. Most of that area right now is paved and used for the plant access, and it's been envisioned that we will recover some of the front end of this plant as it goes along the Riverwalk. There are public amenities envisioned for that, as well as some new fencing. The pier that you see there is a concept. It's not currently included in the project, but it was envisioned in the master plan of the site for consideration later. And that's converting a lot of impervious area into green space. We're looking at stormwater treatment BMPs there as well to incorporate into this design. And this would provide access to the public for the whole Riverwalk. And there are also some public amenities, some restrooms that are up on the front end next to that building that would be provided as part of the project. Anything else, Howard?
No, that's it. I just wanted to make sure the P is featured.
And there it is. There's our concept. Just so we didn't forget it. Green space, you know, one of the things we got in terms of the AAA Process was the public and the committee wanted to see more green space at the site, and that helped us in envision solutions that would incorporate that. And that's what you see here in sort of rough form, when we originally looked at layout and what to recover. And that area you see in the front is where that Riverwalk was. This is the garage that's being demolished, a 1950 vintage. It's currently used as cold storage for the facility. It became the best available location on the site for us to build a new substantial facility, and we're going to be turning a lot of that impervious into a new building, as well as access to the site. This is a rendering of the proposed new process building. You can see that the existing garage was 16 feet in height, and the proposed new building will be 37 feet, which is consistent with the city requirements. I'll give you some better visuals of that in a second here. As this is the entrance to the plant, this view here is a mural that we've considered in an architectural rendering as a concept. As you would come down Front Street, this is what you would see in the new building when you access the site. Currently, right now, you see the old Public Works Garage. And this mural is a concept that we're still developing and working with the city and others to incorporate, but we're providing the provisions as part of the project to include that, as well as some logo branding for the facility, as many people want to visit this once it's constructed.
Dan, why don't you touch on that mural a little bit? As I just painted on the panel.
So this concept, this mural has been used pretty readily. It's becoming more popular in like parking garages and other facilities in cities. What it is, it consists of some architectural aluminum panels that would be affixed to this concrete. These are big giant concrete tanks with lots of concrete on it, so we want to make sure we incorporate that and blend that into the environment. This concept allows a mural of sorts to be put onto that, printed onto that, which will be durable and last for a long time. The actual design itself is in, we'll be in discussion with the city on what they want to eventually do there. But it's maintainable and will last quite a long time. So that's sort of the concept to help blend that in. To the left of this photo, you can see the hill increases up to where the power lines are, and this will blend the whole facility into the existing landscaping. There's an existing boat launch on Front Street. That's a city boat launch right next to the yacht club. As we had intended to raise and increase the grade here on the site to address the sea level rise and protect the facilities, we need to raise this area, which means that boat launch needs to be redone. So as part of this project, we're replacing what's there, basically raising it two to three feet around there in different grades, but the same grades going in as it is now just elevated for that site. Currently, right in front of this boat launch, during some high tides and rain events, that river does come up quite a bit, and that area is currently collecting water at the entrance to the site, which is important in the resiliency of the site to make sure you get access at all times. So that's being regraded and included in the project and permitting. I mentioned the public restrooms as part of the Riverwalk access for folks. It's going to be located to the front of the building, just the side of the mural area for folks to access, and that's been coordinated with the other town departments, the other city departments, excuse me. Stormwater improvements on this project, we've been working with the city engineer in looking at the local requirements. The idea, the concept here is that you see there's two different areas in front of the new building and the boat launch, where we're looking to maximize the ability to treat stormwater on the site to the extent practicable. And that includes a river rain garden, excuse me, rain guard on the right side, you see in the lower right in the conceptual layout there, and then on the left side, some kind of structural BMP could be a jellyfish or something similar like that to treat the stormwater from that current impervious area where most of the parking is for the boat launch access. And that's it in a nutshell on this project. I'd be happy to entertain. Any questions?
Thank you, Dan. Board members, questions right now on the presentation so far? Yes, definitely. Not hearing any questions, either Howard or Dan. Could you give an overview of the neighborhood meeting you had as well? The neighborhood meeting that you had recently? Was there any attendance at that meeting?
Yeah, there was. We actually had one resident come in, but shortly after that, we also had a joint meeting with the Conservation Commission and the Park and Rep Commission. And there was a number of questions.
Okay.
They seemed quite satisfied with that.
Okay.
And again, we've had a record of all of this.
Yeah, I have a record of notes in the file, and then I also have a PowerPoint for the neighborhood meeting that was used at that meeting. It's very similar to what you saw tonight.
And as far as the McKenzie parcel, is that still an ongoing conversation?
Yeah, I actually talked to Mr. McKenzie yesterday, so we were...
Howard, could you speak into the mic? Thanks.
Yes, I actually had another conversation with Mr. McKenzie yesterday. He seems like he may be interested in selling that parcel to the city at the assessed value, so we're going to enter in further discussions with the city attorney on that.
And you still are working with Saco River Corridor, right?
Yes, we have a scheduled meeting with them on the 23rd, and they are actually doing a walkthrough of the site on Thursday, Thursday afternoon.
Okay. Rob?
Yeah, when is the garage coming down, Howard?
Well, as soon as we first signed the first guaranteed maximum price of the project, the first part of the project will be taking down the garage, clearing the site, getting into the hill, and driving piles to the new structure.
For the new one, yeah.
Yes. Once we have approval from you folks and the Corridor Commission, and then we're working on a little bit of right title and interest on the city property, we'll be ready to go. I would say first of September, probably, fairly soon, provided we get through all the permitting.
Any other board questions right now? This item has been advertised as a public hearing.
Eric Doremus with Tyne Bond. So in our permit, we're working on an individual permit for the site, so any work within that 25-foot buffer, which includes the boat ramp. There's a few new outfalls that are being installed for stormwater improvements as well. So in process, hasn't been submitted yet. Looking in the next probably week or two to get that sent out.
But you have been in touch with all the different entities.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, we've had pre-application meetings with DEP and all the agencies, Army Corps. So, yeah, everyone's aware of the project, and we have, you know, preliminary discussions and just waiting to finalize our permit and impact numbers.
But we're in a role of your input.
That's correct. Yeah, Howard, you were just saying the SRCC, was it the 25th?
It's the 23rd.
23rd?
A week from Wednesday. And then, like I said, the board members are coming down for a walkthrough on Thursday. We've, it should be noted, we've had one discussion with them earlier this year, like we did with you folks on our initial review, and they were quite positive, because they're looking to improve water quality and public health like everybody else.
If I can just clarify, so Saco River Corridor issued the same initial approval for demolition and tree clearing, and Howard reviewed the project overall with them too, just like he did with Planning Board. But he has approval already for the initial phase through both Planning Board and Saco River Corridor.
And as far as the memo from Joe Laverrier, the most recent memo, has there been progress since that memo was put out, Emily?
Yes, we did receive a response memo to that, which is in the meeting packet. We have not received Joe's subsequent response to that, just because of the timing of the I'll get the page number of the applicant's response. The conditions of approval that are drafted were reviewed also by the city engineer in case the final stormwater design was not detailed to the full review comments. The response comments here are on page 72 of the meeting packet, the response comments from Tyne Bond on behalf of the Water Resource Recovery Project.
Thank you, Emily. So at this point, the conditions of approval that you've drafted, though, are to Joe's satisfaction.
Yes, they were sent to Joe in draft form for his review in concurrence.
I think it's good to note, too, that we'll be working with Joe extensively through this project.
Okay, Board members, any other questions right now?
Madam Chair, make a motion to open the public hearing.
Thank you for the motion, Glenn. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you for the second, Joyce. I'll call for a vote on opening the public hearing, starting with Matt D.
Yes.
Joyce?
Yes.
Rob?
Got a question, actually. Should we not be finding the site application complete first?
We did that.
I missed that, all right?
You made the motion, actually.
I did, actually. Let me move. It was, yeah, you called me Glenn again. All right, so yes, I'll say yes to that.
Public hearing, yes, Rob. Okay. Glenn, public hearing? Yes, and I'll vote yes as well. Motion passes 5-0 to open the public hearing. So we've opened a public hearing on this item, which again is a site plan review for a facility upgrade to Saco's wastewater treatment plant, which is at 62 to 68 Front Street, which is tax map 31, Lot 178 in the Downtown Zoning District. If you've joined us this evening to speak on this item, you're welcome to take turns coming forward to the podium, and we just ask that you start with your name and address And Emily, while we're waiting for people to come forward, would you be able to find the page with the neighborhood meeting notes?
I don't think I included them, and they're in the files.
Okay.
Madam Chair, seeing no interest in the public comment, I'll move to close the public hearing.
Thank you for the motion, Glenn. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you for the second, Rob. I'll call for a vote on closing the hearing, starting with Matt D.
Yes.
Joyce?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Glenn?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes as well. Motion passes 5-0 to close the hearing. Okay, back to board discussion. Emily, was there anything else you wanted to add to this presentation that Howard and his team have given?
No, thank you.
Sorry. Emily, was there any comment in the neighborhood meeting that we should know about? Anything negative?
No, we had one resident who came to the neighborhood meeting. It was noticed and mailed out in accordance with ordinance standards. The resident really was just making sure the water quality was going to be good or enhanced, leaving the treatment facility. Wanted to make sure there weren't going to be any specific new odors, I think came up as well, so that was answered and addressed. That was really all I remembered from that. And then we had a meeting right afterward, which is not specifically a neighborhood meeting, but it was a Parks and Rec and Conservation Commission joint meeting, where Conservation Commission members were invited to the Parks and Rec meeting, and there was discussion then about, pretty much similar presentation, but about the green space options and further design and working on further design of the... green space options and further design and working on further design of the green space between those two committees. And there really weren't comments about the treatment process or concerns about the project in general from those commissions either.
Do we have any more further detail on the green space or the trees that are being removed?
So I think the applicant could probably address some of these questions. They're good questions.
Yeah, well, pretty much all the trees have been removed behind the Front Street garage. That was our initial talk with that. Eric, I don't believe we were moving anymore, were we? Maybe a little bit around the boat.
Yeah, there's some, there's some minor proposed tree clearing. There's two new stormwater outfalls that have to get down in elevation. And to do that, there's, you know, a few maybe five or six-foot swaths down to the lower elevations for tree clearing. There might be some additional minor clearing for the new gate that's being installed for the entrance to the site. It's proposed as a motorized gate, it's kind of levered out, so there's a little bit of clearing to make that work, but.
Is that depicted on this plan?
It would be, you know, kind of right in the corner of.
Where the new building is going?
Yeah, right in that corner, you can see where the gate comes across the road. That gate will slide over. But the majority of the tree clearing is for the installment of the treatment process, which has already been completed.
So you said most of the trees behind the old city garage is being removed. Does that also remove the buffer from the abutting property lines?
Yeah, the trees are down now, but the building itself will be outside of that 10-foot setback. There's, there's some, we had to extend the tree clearing beyond the limits of the building for stormwater improvements. There's a, you know, a whole hillside behind the building. So we need to install swale and some drainage behind there to make sure that all that water gets away from the building, though.
You might be able to go back to the beginning. We had an aerial, an aerial view previous, maybe way back at the first line.
Because what you're asking, Glenn, is whether there's any sort of buffer.
Go forward a little bit. Okay, see, see Glenn, see where it says the old highway garage on there?
Yep.
Back when we came in for initial review in March, we had talked about clearing those trees. We have taken, since those have come out earlier.
Like all of them?
Well, no, I, I don't, we have a later one. You could drive down and see, but we had to work closely with the Saco River Corridor Commission on that tree removal.
That's why I'm bringing them up. Usually they wash those trees pretty carefully.
Oh, they do. Oh, yeah, no, we had a lot to go through for that.
Yeah.
And I think when we go back to them next week, they're probably going to want to talk about a few more plannings. I wouldn't be surprised that we can put on that drawing. But we had to have enough room to get in there to do the piles, to drive those things in.
Understood. So that's a residence behind that tree line? That white house I'm looking at?
Yeah, yeah, there's, there's a CMP zone in there that's quite wide. I forget how wide it is, 150 feet, 120? And then there's some residents behind that.
So my question again is, there doesn't appear to be any buffer between that residence and your operation.
Well, there's still a substantial amount of trees there left, yeah. I think if.
Yeah, so between the Saco property and the private parcels is the CMP parcel. So that's the overhead wires, central main power. So that's a substantial, you know, buffer right in its own.
Yep.
Where it's all, you know, majority wooded with clearing for the overhead wires.
I think what, right now, as it stands, these trees were removed right about in this area.
Oh, okay.
They didn't go way up there yet, though.
That's what I was envisioning.
Just visual, I think, the way of the shot is.
Okay, thank you.
Glenn, any other questions on that, or?
Well, we granted a waiver on the, on the lighting. But we don't know what the lighting is going to be.
We granted a waiver on a photometric plan, but we can still talk with them about lighting and everything. So I don't know, Dan or Eric, which one of you could give an overview on what's going in for lighting?
So we haven't gotten that far in the design yet. This is sort of the final step. But as is typical, two things to point out. One is the residences you see behind the plant are actually much more elevated. So their line of sight and view is like right over the plant. So you're not going to see most of the facility. Most of that site currently, we're going to match what's there in terms of visual lighting. The building that you see on, that is going to replace the garage, let me go to the rendering here, oops. So most of those buildings that you see in this rendering are actually existing, right? And the new building to the far left that you see will have some lighting on it. It'll be, it'll be shaded from above, so that they won't see that. It'll be below, below the, the view of those residents above that.
So is the entire site kind of lit up at night, so operators can see what's going on?
It is slightly, and some of them are motion lights as well. So we don't really, a lot of those processes that are on the site now will be eliminated. I could foresee less lighting, actually, than there is now.
Okay. We can certainly, we can certainly develop a lighting plan when we get to that point in terms of finalizing the site and include that. Most of the lights today are using LEDs and low emissions as well, and more centered to where you need them. But we certainly will have to include that as part of the new project facility there. And we'll certainly take that into consideration and work with the city on that.
Well, you know what? What could change, too, Dan, I think, is as we develop that riverwalk and what goes down there, we may want some kind of lighting. But we haven't quite gotten that by yet.
Right, that was mentioned by the police.
Emily, do you have anything to add on this?
I'm just wondering if it would be helpful to look at like a Google Earth image to see where the buildings are in relation to trees.
You want me to pull that up?
Yeah, if you don't mind.
Actually, I'm not on the internet right now.
You can just click the button. So why don't you go to, like, standing on the road by the Front Street Garage? And then, do we want to point out any of the trees that have been cleared and the trees that are remaining on this? I don't know if it would be helpful or not.
Yeah, you can see where the, the overhead wires are, right over here, so, I mean, it's, it's hard to say. I don't have a measurement off the back of the existing building, how far back we went, but. 30 feet or so. Maybe 80 feet and so. Howard's saying approximately 80 feet off the back of the building.
Yeah, I think I understand that, you know, not all the trees were removed.
Correct.
That's where my concern was.
Yep.
Can you bring us back to that riverwalk green space area?
You looking for the, this rendering here?
That one.
So obviously, the police department's going to be requiring lighting along that trail.
Yeah, I believe there's been conversations already with the department.
You're right, Alyssa. There has been some conversations with that, and we are going to work closely with them. What we really want to do is make it more of a very public place that will be used all the time. And they, and they want to be able to access that site. And Park and Rec wants to be able to come in there for rubbish pickup. So there may be a gate on the inside to come in through that can't be accessed through the riverwalk. You know, they can walk in through the trash and those types of things. But Ryan has a big vision for that, to really be a really kid-friendly type thing. You'd be surprised right now how many folks, Rob would probably know, but how many folks actually walk down through there every day? Even in the wintertime, people are going down through there in snowshoes and stuff. It's quite popular.
Much more attractive way to approach it than it is now.
Oh, yeah. You look at the way it was before with the driveway and everything. We've gone and put the driveway in the middle of the buildings to enhance that green space, plus elevate it a bit, so.
So can you flip between what's existing in the conceptual plan? You don't have a side-by-side image, probably.
Not side-by-side, we do have a surface comparison plan that shows existing conditions, a color plan.
I'm interested to see what it looks like now, where the riverwalk is currently.
Yeah, here, let me, let me go to this plan. I think this will be helpful. Might be a little more info on here than you're looking for, but it should be a good overview of the. So this here is the existing conditions. Let's see if I can open this up right. So you can see down below, the pointer's not working, but the large swath of pavement between the treatment plant and the river.
Yep.
So that's all red. And then in our proposed conditions, that all goes to green. There's still a red path. We're going to have a paved path, and it'll meander through the site. This is kind of a conceptual design for the park right now. But the idea is to, yeah, reclaim all of that impervious area right now, transition back to green space, and convert it to a public, public amenity.
What's the timeframe for the construction? Completion, I should say.
Oh, about September 26th, if everything goes right.
It's not bad.
Yeah, no, it's not bad. That's, that's what's the beauty about this construction management at risk. We bring the contractor in early, and all three of us are helping with the design on this, and they're helping with, how can we do this better? How can we save some money? It's really helpful during this project.
That's the best way for a city to do it.
Oh, it is, but it's, it's a fairly new concept in New England, believe it or not. But if we'd done this design, bid build, we don't know what our bids would have come in at. Say we have $50 million, it could have come in at $80 million. At least now, we can go work through this and come up with what the guaranteed maximum price is. And if we have to shift a few things, well, then that's what we'll have to do.
Perfect. I have no more questions, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Glenn. Other board members, any questions? Not hearing any, okay. So Emily, the ultimate goal of this is to make a finding on the findings of fact and the conditions of approval related to site plan, correct?
Correct.
Any other reviews we need to be doing? Other motions you need us to incorporate into this?
Just recommendation that you go per all the site plan findings A through T, and then also look at 179-6.02. This is on page 2 to 5 of the meeting packet draft findings.
Board members, any questions right now on the review criteria that Emily just outlined that we're going to be making a finding on?
So are you looking for a motion?
I think, Emily, if we take this up with maybe a motion on the findings of fact to start, would that be appropriate? Okay.
Yes.
So the findings of fact start on page 1, right? Well, page 6 of the PDF, labeled page 1.
Madam Chair, I move to approve the draft findings of fact as prepared by city staff.
Thank you for the motion, Joyce. Is there a second? Thank you for the second, Glenn. Any further discussion? Not hearing any. I'll call for a vote on the findings of fact, starting with Matt D.
Yes.
Joyce?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Glenn? And I'll vote yes as well. Motion passes 5-0. Okay, and then moving on, so Emily, bottom of what you've labeled as page 2 starts with site plan review criteria A, correct?
Yes. The 179-6.02?
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
And that goes all the way to T?
Yes.
It's a, Madam Chair, I move to find that the criteria for site plan review is outlined on pages 7 through 10 of the PDF packet have been met.
Thank you for the motion, Joyce. Is there a second? Thank you for the second, Glenn. Any further discussion? Not hearing any. I'll call for a vote, starting with Matt D.
Yes.
Joyce?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Glenn? And I'll vote yes as well. Motion passes 5-0. And then Emily, another motion on the conditions of approval is drafted.
Yes, thank you.
Madam Chair, I move that we adopt the draft conditions of approval as presented on pages 10 through 12 of our packet.
Thank you for the motion, Joyce. Is there a second? Thank you for the second, Glenn. Any further discussion? Not hearing any. I'll call for a vote, starting with Matt D.
Yes.
Joyce?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Glenn? And I'll vote yes as well. Motion passes 5-0. Emily, that concludes what we needed to do on this application, correct?
Yes, thank you. It's approved with conditions, and we will send the approval letter out.
Great, okay. Thank you, thank you, Howard, Dan, Eric.
Thank you, folks.
Thank you.
Okay, so moving on to the next item on our agenda. We have been tasked, tasked this evening with hosting a public hearing for LD 2003 and the proposed housing ordinance revisions to chapter 230. So we will start with a staff introduction on this, and I believe we have a presentation we'll be watching with you, Emily.
Yes, the introduction, thank you. The introduction is that since February 2023, planning staff has been presenting housing-related ordinance information to the city council, to the planning board, and with the long-range planning committee. The draft ordinance revisions are required to comply with LD 2003, which is a state law with local requirements that become effective for municipalities with the city council form of government on January 1st, 2024. Originally, this was July 1, and it was moved to January 1 by another LD, LD 1706, just for clarity. The former city planner also provided information in 2022 about LD 2003 and the future requirements for municipalities. Recently, on July 10, city council approved the first reading of the draft ordinance revisions that were in tonight's meeting packet and forwarded it to the planning board for your review, following the section 2301701 ordinance regarding the amendment process. Planning's trying to spread the word about this. We have a dedicated webpage to learn more at sacomaine.org/housing. On Monday night, we hosted, last night, we hosted an informational session. That's actually what these ward maps are for. We left them up because we were having tonight's public hearing. And there's also info sheets that are still out there for the ward numbers. So each ward has its own info sheet. We didn't throw them all at you tonight, but if you're interested in picking one up, they're all in the back there, and any one of the members of the public here can pick them up as well. Departmental and peer reviews, we did have Southern Main Planning and Development Commission, which is the regional planning agency here for our for Saco, review this and make sure that it met the LD 2003. and make sure that it met the LD 2003 requirements, and it did. Their memo is in the meeting packet. And then we also sent the draft ordinance revisions to the city attorney, Tim Murphy, who's reviewed it along the way. And we have additionally worked with the Code Enforcement Director and with other city staff. If you were here for the info session, you would have seen a panel of people here from all different departments, so a lot of collaborative effort here. Right now, we're recommending these revisions. We will monitor them as we go forward, which we'll see in the presentation, but let me go ahead and give a presentation here to you. So we already recapped a little bit about last night's info session. For Glenn Charet, he will hear this twice. Okay. So also in tonight's meeting packet, and at your table, you're gonna find a crosswalk that staff put together. It's a crosswalk comparison document. I'll go through how to use it in just a minute. So tonight, we'll look at the ordinance revisions and the crosswalk, and we'll have the public hearing, and then review some next steps and overall timeline. Just a recap of what we looked at back in June. LD 2003, it's a new law that requires all communities to make some changes to their local ordinances. The goal is to increase affordable housing in Maine. You can look up LD 2003. We have a direct link to the law as approved by the governor on our sacomaine.org/housing webpage. Saco's role is to do zoning updates to comply with the law and have them ready and on the books by January 1. We should report back any city needs or concerns with complying and monitor compliance with the law going forward. Again, this is a state law. These updates are not initiated from Saco. And I should point out, the state has provided a guidance document as well as rules for how this is to be implemented. Again, that guidance document you can find on our webpage as well as on the Maine DECD, Department of Economic and Community Development webpage. So it's a useful tool. Just a little reminder, Saco's comp plan was updated in 2022. These are the goals relative to housing. Overall, the goal is to provide a variety of housing options, to retain and welcome people of all ages, incomes, lifestyles, and backgrounds as members of our community. And then we have some more specific goals relative to meeting budget needs, greater density where housing where areas water and sewer are located, walkability near developments, and improving existing housing stock. So how to use the large document in front of you here. This was actually modified from a federal lawmaking process. A lot of the federal governments use this crosswalk table. It tells you exactly the section number as the ordinance exists today, the section or article name, the new section or article number, new section or article name, revisions to each section, section by section, and then we marked whether they're substantial, minor, or no change. If it's no change, a lot of the times, it's just a renumbering or relettering for organizational purposes. If it's minor, most of the time, it's adding a definition or clarifying a definition. And if it's substantial, it's actually changing some ordinance provision that sits on the books today in some method. So this is a little update on how to use this. For members of the public, there were copies of this in the back. It will also be posted on our webpage. Just recap of LD 2003 relative to the three primary components. Here, we've boiled it down to three items, one, two, and three, and we have tried to present these items consistently throughout all of our presentations. So number one is relative to accessory dwelling units. Number two is dwelling units allowed, and number three is affordable housing developments. If you pick up any of the info ward sheets in the back of the room, they will also follow the same numbering order, one, two, and three. Overview of the state law relative to accessory dwelling units. There's not much change here for Saco needed. We only have a couple of revisions that we need to do, which is to update parking standards. We can no longer require accessory dwelling units to have separate parking standards from single-family homes. We are removing siting restrictions, so right now, the ordinance says that the ADU has to be located on the side or the rear of the house. The state law is gonna require accessory dwelling units to follow single-family zoning laws. We will also recommend, as staff, we are recommending that accessory dwelling units be 400 to 1,000 square feet in size. Right now, Saco's accessory dwelling units can only go up to 800 square feet. The reason for this recommendation is to help people who may want to age in place and have larger spaces for hallways and for bathrooms, things that would have to be ADA compliant or converted to be ADA compliant. It's important to note that in 2021, as part of our zoning ordinance revision process, Saco updated its accessory dwelling unit standards to allow for detached structures up to 800 square feet in size. We thought it was important to provide this chart to show that even with that change, the number of accessory dwelling units has not spiked. We were wondering if maybe we'd get a lot more, but we have not. It's about consistent. We get about an average of eight per year over the last handful of years. The second provision of LD 2003, number two, is dwelling units allowed. We will recommend, in the draft ordinance, it's recommended that we have a new use called dwelling units permitted by right per state statute on the use table. This will allow up to four units on vacant lots in the high-density downtown, medium-density general business, Main and Beach Highway Business, and Portland Road districts. However, you will still be limited by the lot size that you have, so you still have to follow the zoning as it sits in our books today. So you would still need to calculate your minimum lot area per dwelling unit and follow those provisions. In areas listed here, where you have existing homes, you can have up to two more units, dwelling units, where an existing home exists, for a total of up to three units, and that's on lots with a house already that exists again in the RCWR, LDR, Seaside Residential, Camp Alice. Again, this will be limited to several factors. Not every lot is gonna be eligible because a lot, some of the lots just won't be large enough. For instance, I did this calculation on my lot, and it's not large enough for a second standalone dwelling. Here's just some example from the guidance document from the State of Maine's DECD, and this goes over how somebody could add an existing dwelling unit or two existing dwelling units to their single-family home. It's important to note that when you can add two dwelling units, one can be detached and one can be attached, so you can't just have two new structures out in your backyard. The third provision of LD 2003, number three on all the ward sheets and through our presentations, is relative to affordable housing developments. As written, the draft ordinance revisions would allow affordable housing developments in the MDR, HDR, D, or downtown, general business, Main and Beach Highway Business, and PR, Portland Road zones. More than half of the units have to be restricted to affordable, whether in that be through deed restriction or through rent restriction. And if these provisions are met, 2.5 times the base density of the existing zone could be tapped into. So an example of this in the high-density residential zone would be if you had market rate, you could get three units on a 9,000-square-foot vacant lot, and if you went into the affordable housing provision, somebody could get a potential of up to seven units on a 9,000-square-foot vacant lot. Again, we would have to look at environmental considerations. If someone goes for seven units at one time, that'd still be a planning board review process. You'd still need to follow any applicable shoreline zones, any applicable environmental considerations, minimum lot area per dwelling unit, and any other standards of our ordinance. Some notes on affordability. It will be 30-year restricted requirement. Again, that's 30 years either rent restricted or 30 years deed restricted. For rent restricted, it'll be 80% area median income, which also includes housing costs at no more than 30% of total costs someone's paying on their home. So it's not gonna be a, I can't really give you a, here's the number for Saco. We can certainly look at tables, but it's gonna vary a little bit. We will, as a municipality, have some compliance monitoring role to ensure that affordability is retained long-term. This is done in other states, in other municipalities as well. And I guess it's important to note on affordability that, and on some of the density bonuses, that all of our neighboring municipalities are doing the same or similar provisions. It might not say the same words, although a lot of the definitions will be the same, but it's the same compliance with LD 2003, so it won't be just Saco that's allowing extra units in certain areas. I think maybe at the end of this, we should go back to the slide, but during City Council's first reading, they actually asked a request for feedback from the Planning Board and the Long Range Planning Committee. Some of the items were to review general business in Saco Island Zone for relative to affordable housing development use being potentially permitted or use that would be allowed in some fashion in those zones. For Portland Road and Saco Island districts, relative to Portland Road, accessory dwelling units was a question, if they should be allowed for existing single-family homes, and then affordable housing developments relative, again, to the Saco Island zoning district. We also have a request from the councilors to review Councilor Hatch's question relative to the low-density residential zoning, affordable housing, and growth areas. And I'm gonna ask Lisa if you can pass this out to the Planning Board members so they can take a look at that through the next round of the presentation. So we will go back to this at the end, so you can have the requests for comments and questions right in front of you. The timeline, we have the hearing tonight. The Planning Board is asked to present or to provide a report to the City Council. The September and October is the general timeframe for the City Council public hearings and the final readings, and November, the ordinance could become effective. We don't want to rush anyone. We do have a January 1 timeline, but we certainly want to make sure that we've done a good review process on this. So this is just a projected potential timeline. Some information on growth. So Saco's growth data, we looked at for other presentations for the City Council, and we took a look at how many dwelling units have been added per year from our assessing records. So thanks for assessing to help us out with that. We looked at commercial square footage that's being added year over year, and we looked at the number of new homes, number of dwelling units added per year. So it's been a little bit of an uptick from 2020, but not much. 100 units in 2020. By 2023 data, we had 124 units, and this goes from April to April 1st of each year. And then from 2019 to 2023, we had some growth in commercial square footage as well that you can see up there. We also took a look at growth data relative to percentage of residential growth versus commercial percentage, and I will say this is not an apples-to-apples comparison. It's a little more apples and oranges, but it gives you a snapshot of how Saco's growing. We looked at commercial square footage versus residential units. Our Assistant Planner, Chisholm, put together this slide, which looks at community growth and population trends relative to other locations. She just wanted me to point out that the 2022 data was based on a data set that went through June or July, I believe, and the other thing to point out, this does not include new neighbor asylum seekers either, but it is a snapshot of data that we have available. What else is the planning department doing regarding housing? We're collaborating with other departments as well. Affordable Housing Task Force collaborative started, collaboration started by the city, former city administrator. We've been working on an accessory dwelling unit booklet with Age Friendly, so thank you for that help, Age Friendly. Sharing information about LD 2003. Again, we have a dedicated housing webpage, and there are info sheets for wards in the back. And in 2024, we are embarking on a housing action plan through ARPA funding that was set aside from 2022. It's really gonna be important for us to monitor and report any requirements or additional consideration that needs to be looked at for LD 2003, whether that be for resources for monitoring compliance, or whether that be for what is needed at the state level. So I did mention last night at the info session that we are working on a growth monitoring tool where we're gonna go out and look and every year, get information on how Saco's growing, ask all the departments, and then have that available for the City Council at some point, either before or during their budget process, so they can get a good snapshot of how the city's growing and how it's, how it may continue to grow. And of course, we would be happy to share that with the Planning Board members and the Long Range Planning Committee. I just want to thank all the other departments. This was for the info session slide, but they've really worked collaboratively with us, looking at LD 2003 and different impacts. And we've had residents who submitted questions relative to the info session last night, which really helped us put together our materials, so... I'd be happy to address any questions.
Great. Thank you, Emily. Board members, any questions right now on the presentation? Okay, not hearing any specific questions. May make sense to jump into a public hearing on this.
Madam Chair, I move to open the public hearing about LD 2003 Housing Ordinance Revision.
Thank you for the motion, Joyce. Is there a second? Thank you for the second, Glenn. I'll call for a vote on opening the hearing, starting with Matt D.
Yes.
Joyce?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Glenn? And I'll vote yes as well. Motion passes 5-0 to open a public hearing. So if you have joined us this evening to speak on this item, which again is Proposed Housing Ordinance Revisions to Chapter 230 pertinent to LD 2003, you're welcome to join us at the podium. We just asked that you start with your name and address for our records. And I will be using our timer tonight set to five minutes, and we'll see if we can get through the room and give everyone a chance to speak. Sure.
Hello, my name is Rich Uwer. I live at 22 Ocean Greens Drive in Ward 4. And I wanted to start off with, I've attended a number of meetings related to this, and I've spoken one other time, and I want to say that I appreciate all the work that's being done on this, because there's been a tremendous amount of work, obviously, by Emily and her staff and other people in the city and departments, so I appreciate that. It's a lot. And it was foisted on you all by the state, right, by passing that law? And I'm not against affordable housing, but it's interesting to note that that state law was passed by less than half of the total representatives. So it's just kind of an interesting backdrop to why, how this happened. I want to go on record that I'm against the idea of changing what was proposed by the Planning Board, Planning Board to keep an LDR without affordable housing and without the recommendations or the requests by the town council. I believe that you all followed a process to set up the LDR with the comp plan and the 10-year plan. Now, I'm speaking about this as if I completely understand it, and I don't, but from my understanding of it, it made a lot of sense to me, and other reasons not to change the LDR. And we're enunciated by Councilor Berman and other people at the meeting on the 24th, that there's one road in and out of Ward 4 and the LDR, the conservation area, the Rachel Carson Conservation Area, the river. There's a concern about the strain on the resources by adding more units to the ward, because there already are gonna be more units, right? Because the ADUs are gonna be possible in addition to the fact that Saco already had a pretty progressive ordinance on dwelling units and ADUs, and there's been some increase there. Certainly, there'll probably be more with more awareness of this LD 2003. So I think you're accomplishing getting more dwelling units in that ward. And so I guess my summary point there is, if you're gonna have additional growth already in dwelling units in Ward 4 and in the LDR, why do we need... and in the LDR, why do we need to multiply that by two and a half by making it a growth area or by allowing affordable or multifamily housing? So appreciate all your time again and all the work that's done on this, but just wanted to let you know from somebody who lives in the ward how I feel. So thank you.
Thank you, Rich. Linda, I saw your hand up. You can just come up.
Hello. Thank you very much, Madam Chair, members of the Planning Board. My name is Linda Valentino, and I reside at Two Saad Farm Lane with my husband Curtis Scammon. Kurt is a farmer. We farm on about 150 acres. And I am a real estate broker, and I have been for the last 45 years in Saco. I wanted to say that I did watch your entire presentation last night, and I was very impressed by what you have done to address the affordable housing needs in the city of Saco. I also wanted to take the opportunity to thank Speaker Fecto for bringing this to our attention and for submitting legislation so that we can address this in a timely fashion. I work in real estate, so I see the affordability crisis every single day, multiple times a day. People trying to build a house or buy a house in Saco, coming from longtime families who have lived in Saco and they're simply shut out from a lot of it that's being done right now. There are many people coming in with a lot of money, with a lot of larger homes. And the people in my daughter's age are really being shut out from a lot of the houses. We listed a house on Elmwood Drive the other day for $340,000. We had 40 people look at it, and we had 21 written offers. The only offer that we took was not the highest one, but was the cash one. People, even if they're putting 20% down now, are being shut out of the market. So one of the things that I wanted to talk about tonight was really to, one of the things that I felt very strongly to make this affordable, and I had come to all of your previous meetings when the zoning was changing, and these are things that I advocated for them. Unfortunately, the pandemic kind of put a crimp into participating in a lot of those meetings. But I wanted to bring it up again today. I want to speak on one section of it where I feel very strongly on homeownership because homeownership builds wealth. I understand that apartments are needed in the city of Saco, but I'm not here to address that. I'm here to address the opportunity to get more affordable housing built in the city of Saco. And the way to do that, I feel, is especially in the RC zone, is to change the requirements from 80,000 square feet to 40,000 square feet. And also to change the road frontage from 200 feet to 150 feet. The main thing that developers have to face is the cost of roads and construction. The more road frontage you have, the longer the road is going to be. The longer the road is, the more expense, then the more expensive the lots. So there's no way you can build a house for 300, 400, or even $500,000 nowadays in the city of Saco because it's just too expensive. So you're putting more expensive homes. I think that this is the number one thing to getting affordable housing, especially in more rural areas, is to go to 40,000 square feet. When I hear about putting seven units on a 9,000-square-foot lot and to put two units, you would need 160,000 square feet in the RC. It just doesn't make sense. I really feel strongly that people need to build wealth and build equity. And to do that, we need more affordable, affordable housing. And that comes on reducing lot size. There are many 40,000-square-foot lots in the area that I live on the Boom Road. So that's, one of the things was to reduce it from 80,000 to 40,000 in the RC. The second was to reduce it from 200 to 150. And the third was I wanted to mention the sprinkler systems that you put in. We're trying to have more affordable housing, and now they're requiring the sprinkler system. We've done an extension revision to the code. They have very large windows, windows large enough for a firefighter with his pack to go through. You have hard-wired smoke detectors, carbon monoxide. We sell many existing homes with windows so small a firefighter couldn't get through. That's not the case on new construction houses. What I would also like is requesting now is for you to waive the sprinkler requirement on houses less than 1,500 square feet. Those are small, affordable houses, and you don't need to add another $5,000 or $6,000 to the cost of a house. Many of those are one-story ranches, and I think that that would be something. I can understand we have mega mansions now in Saco. Those can have sprinklers for the firefighters, but for small houses under 1,500 square feet, I think that's adding a burden and is making a lot of houses unaffordable. So with that, I just had a couple of things. One question I wanted to have was the clarification, the lot with the existing family house. Are you going to have that as of a specific date that that house? Because a vacant lot can have two, and then a lot, and then a house. You can have the ADU and the other one. But then it was mentioned last night that the house has to be built as of the date of the ordinance. So maybe when you're looking at that to clarify that. So those are my three requests. And I know somebody's here also to speak on letting more houses on private roads, and I also support that suggestion. Thank you very much.
Good evening. Dave Lemoine, 25 Ocean Greens Drive. I wanted to just present a little unique angle for consideration and really a request for help. As you go through this zoning effort, recognize that many, many homes in the city are built in subdivisions. These are, excuse me, subdivisions that have been through the planning process, and they include a lot of deed covenants. Now, those covenants have generally aligned with zoning for a long time, which has made it, you know, a happy public-private land use approach. With this change, that begins to fall apart. And so what's happening is there'll be a need for individuals to assert their own covenants within the subdivision. And that probably happens after the backhoes have come in. I'm asking for some help as you go through the process. How might we get ahead of that? Is there something you could put on or recommend putting on a building permit? Is this construction complicit with existing deed restrictions? Some way to get ahead of this because otherwise it's going to sow a lot of disruption. I don't think it's, it's not the best public administration that this city could ask for. So that's really my, my issue to share with you. Ask for help in trying to resolve that as this zoning rolls forward. Happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Dave.
Hi. Chelsea Hill 108 Bradley Street in Saco, Ward Five. Our comprehensive plan is very specific. It does a good job of speaking to very specific benchmarks that the city wants to meet related to AMI, number of housing units, et cetera. I'm apprehensive about the use of accessory dwelling units as a bolt-on solution to a lack of housing that is affordable in Saco. I haven't heard much about prevention of ADUs being leveraged for short-term rentals. I think that if ADUs are going to be utilized as a substantial solution to housing affordability, an ADU should be licensed as a non-short-term rental solution, and the program should be actively managed. And I may be missing something in what I've reviewed, so if I have, I apologize. Additionally, ADUs put the burden of creating affordable housing on what will probably be individual families. I'll use us as an example. We live in a house that currently has 3,200 square feet finished with a potential for a total of 4,000 square feet finished, or basically two whole houses. It was built in 1900. While it's not the same, I don't think, for us to split this house into a rental for an owner-occupied rental as an ADU, it will be, according to quotes we have received because we've thought about doing this, be approximately $150,000 to make our house into a legitimate duplex. This is a huge expense, which cannot be offset with even the rental income from a market-rate apartment. Additionally, or, you know, basically a market-rate duplex. Additionally, creating ADUs does not obligate the owner to rent it at a rate that is big A affordable, as the draft to Section 23-701E standards are written, as I've read them. The changes proposed in Section 230-703, which are called Affordable Housing Developments, which simply state a majority of units must be affordable for rented at 80% of the AMI and for owned housing at 120% AMI. If I'm reading it correctly, is if that two homes are being built, one must be affordable. If three, then, then two. If 50, then 26. I have apprehension about this proposed draft language because there's no requirement for housing developments above a certain threshold of units to contain any affordable housing if the developer does not want to or does not choose to. Therefore, you would miss out on something like, as an example, anything above 50 units must be 10% affordable. I've seen other cities in Maine instituting some kind of, you know, minimum above a certain number of units, and we don't seem to be doing, taking that approach. I also have apprehension about this proposed draft because it encourages islands of housing where individuals who are under-resourced in our community are forced to live in very specific areas. It creates places where very real concerns that people have. And there's lots of studies that show, yes, there are social problems, or no, there are not social problems associated with housing projects, which is an outmoded use of the word, but we can call it affordable housing development. It makes people resistant and nervous about these types of developments. I want to live in a community where my neighbor can be a 23-year-old electrician's apprentice with a new family, and my neighbor can be a retiree couple on a fixed income, and where the housing is attractive enough to retain a local bank executive or an attorney. We will not likely see this type of diversity in resources within our neighborhoods if we go to developments that are homogeneous in their income level. This includes the other side of the same coin. While we sit here discussing how we can make segmented, majority, lower-income housing developments, we are also approving new developments with condo association and homeowner associations with huge monthly fees and $650,000 price tags for single-family homes or 500-square-foot one-bedroom lots with spiral staircases up to the only bedroom for retirees on one of the busiest, highest-speed streets in our city that sell for $330,000. We can't hunt for affordable housing in pockets and then develop outrageously priced neighborhoods in other parts of the city.
Good evening. I don't know if you'll allow me to speak since I'm from across the bridge, but just, just wanted to introduce myself, for those of you who don't know me. Ryan Fecto, I represented House District 11 over in Biddeford, sponsored the legislation that resulted in LD 2003, and now serve in the governor's administration, working on housing policy. And I just want, I, I don't typically and have not attended other cities' planning board meetings or council meetings as they contemplate implementation of LD 2003. But since I am just across the river, I figured I would come over this evening and offer myself as a resource. I just want to commend Emily for a very, very thorough effort here. This is probably one of the best documents I've seen outlining the changes being made to ordinances related to LD 2003 for, for this, for a city. And I, I think this is a very helpful tool as you look at how to, how to come into compliance by January 1st. Just a couple notes based on some comments that have been shared. The, the law protects restrictive covenants. So if there's a, if there's a restrictive covenant that is in place within a subdivision, particularly the law states that the restrictive covenant shall be, remain intact. So the law can't conflict with any existing covenants that have been in place. I think that's a really important point to be made. I, I think there's, there's obviously some concerns raised about affordability. I, I think when we contemplated this law in Augusta and have been talking about housing in our communities across the state, I really think the point to emphasize is there isn't one kind of housing that's going to solve the crunch that we face. And really, it is addressing the need for housing across the board for all income levels because the person looking for a market-rate or even above-market-rate house will occupy housing that someone else would consider affordable. And so really trying to break the stalemate that Senator Valentino described in this housing market where people who are trying to become first-time home buyers can, can actually realize that dream. And people who want to downsize are, are no longer afraid to put the for-sale sign on their front lawn because if they, if they do, they don't know where they're going to go. So these are the challenges that I think we face, not only in Biddeford-Saco, but of course statewide. And we're seeing trends in housing such as the household size decrease. And as household size decrease, we all, that means we're going to need more housing because our population has not really changed. In fact, it's gone up a little bit. So these are, these are some of the, the challenges that we face statewide. And obviously, there's a lot more data. I would also just point out that we, as part of LD 2003, were required to, to establish statewide housing goals. Those, those goals, we are, we contracted with an outside entity, HRNA, and they have worked on a comprehensive study of Maine's housing needs. It will by far be the most comprehensive look at housing in state history. I think I can pretty confidently say that. And we expect those results to be publicly available this fall. And so to the extent that those, that that data can be helpful in informing decisions that you all make here in Saco, and obviously regionally, that data will be available. I, I've seen a preview of their findings, and it is incredibly illuminating to see the, the needs that we have based on our current population trends here in our state and the needs that would occur if even an increase of 2.5% or so population growth were to occur. So we have a, we have a challenge ahead of us. I don't envy the task of local jurisdictions as they try to wrestle with complying with 2003. I know it is, it is difficult to take state law and apply it locally. But I think the urgency is what, is what requires tonight's action and the action going forward. So thank you for your time, your effort, and I'm just across the bridge if you ever need me. Thank you.
If anyone else has joined us this evening to speak on this item, you're welcome to come forward now. Okay, board members, we're having a slowdown in the public hearing, so maybe we turn back to some board discussion and we can leave the hearing open for a few minutes.
Madam Chair, I do have a couple of concerns, I guess.
Sure.
Let me collect my thoughts here. Of course, I can't find the section, but in the performance standards, it talks about the ADU being in similar design as a house. Those aren't the words they used. The words they used, it's open to interpretation of the code enforcement office. That was one concern. The ADUs have to use a current driveway that exists on the property that's being built. And I submit that we And I submit that we go back to the driveway ordinance and allow someone to put in a second driveway and having that jurisdiction fall on public works. I'm in agreement with sprinklers. I'm an advocate of having sprinklers. Don't get me wrong, but I disagree with requiring sprinklers in an ADU, ADU unit that is 800 square feet. And I think the performance standards should include a statement that E911 addresses have to be concerned or have to be looked at. So the existing house will have an address and then two or three ADU, ADU units will have a separate address, but the performance standards don't talk about that. And that's a simple statement. And meanwhile, I'll try to find that statement that I can't seem to find now. That's it for now.
So Glenn, back to your first one. Is that what you're looking for now?
Yeah.
Okay. I'll give you a second on that then.
Okay.
Okay. Other board members right now? Joyce?
Well, one thing that we've talked about and was talked about at council and I'm not sure has been resolved is, is, is the question about ADUs being used as Airbnbs, as short-term rentals, which really doesn't solve any sort of housing problem in this city. So it seems like that really needs to be firmed up. And I know we, I know we've talked around short-term rentals, but we haven't really codified some, some rules to help us, to help us regulate them. It seems like that has to go hand-in-hand with, with this process, otherwise we're just creating a bunch of, potentially a bunch of Airbnbs.
Madam Chair, I did find seven. So I'm going to read this word for word. And this is under the performance standards. It says, "A detached ADU must be designed and constructed to be visually compatible with the principal residence. Building proportions, exterior finish materials, fenestration and trim, roof pitch and other architectural details should be similar or complementary to those aspects of the principal There has been some court rulings and I know this language is throughout our ordinance and some courts have questioned the visual compatible of that particular statement. And I think you're leaving it up to a code enforcement officer to determine if it's compatible or if the finish is similar to the existing structure. I'm just very uncomfortable with that whole statement.
Are you looking for feedback from other board members on it?
Yes, I guess I am.
Yep. Okay, so everyone else, other thoughts on that? Matt?
So you're uncomfortable with the statement in the sense that you don't want it to conform or you're concerned that it's, people are just going to do whatever they want?
No, I guess it's not clear enough to me what is visually compatible.
Okay.
What that might be to me is going to be different from everybody else on this panel.
Yep, it's very vague. The statement is kind of vague.
Very vague.
Yeah, what is visually compatible? So you're saying there should be, you're looking for some more concrete description?
Yeah, so it's, so it's clearly defined. So someone who's developing an ADU can run down a list of what will make it compatible.
Okay. No, that makes sense. I like, I concur with your, your thoughts there.
Emily, any feedback on this?
I think this is a really good question. We did have peer review. We did review this as far as the red line. We really focused on the red line or the, or the strike-throughs and the underlines here, but I'm not 100% clear that number seven would even be allowed under the state law because the state law basically provides that ADUs have to meet the current single-family housing requirements. And I don't think that we have any citing of, as far as visually compatible trim or exterior finish materials or anything like that for a single-family house. So I'm not 100% sure that this would even be something that we want to keep in the ordinance to comply with the, with the LD 2003 law.
Gotcha. So at some point in the performance standards, are going to be reviewed by your department or this board?
These are the performance standards that we went through and reviewed and we did these red lines, but I'm saying that that's a good catch and that's why we're doing this review process to make sure we look at things like this. So I'm thinking we probably are going to get to the point of maybe looking at striking number seven.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Right, and it's probably worth pointing out because we discussed this year or two ago, maybe before your time, Glenn. We talked about the sprinkler issue in terms of where we were going to require sprinklers. We dialed it back quite a bit from our original discussions. So as I recall, it's in new subdivisions and detached ADUs. So attached ADUs that are part of an existing structure don't require sprinkles. I've got that right, right, Dave? I know Dave Penelton's in the back of the room and he, he knows this inside now.
He does, he does. And that's my understanding.
But I, yeah, I believe it's the detached ADUs.
An ADU, an ADU unit that's detached has to be sprinkled. And I talked to the director of code enforcement, Dave Toomey, for reasoning why they required that. And basically, they were required it because of safety, thinking that seniors might be moving into that. I don't know if I buy that argument because a unit is only 800 square feet. And if I recall, the building code doesn't require sprinkler system in a single-family home outside of a subdivision. And if I also recall correctly, the municipalities can't alter the building code language, but I could be mistaken on that. But I stand with the fact that, in my opinion, an 800-square-foot home should not have to be sprinkled unless it's attached to a building that is sprinkled.
And I don't think that was the code, it wasn't codes that required it, it was us. I mean, we, we developed that in coordination with the fire department.
Rob?
Yeah, back to the ADUs and Airbnbs. I'm, I'm in agreement that we want them to be people living in them and not short-term rentals. I could also see the argument, and I heard it from someone in Saco, that I could afford my house if I could build an ADU and rent it out on a short term, which would be more profitable than... So you're looking at a situation where somebody is trying to afford a house and they can do it through that business model. I don't think it's the way we want to see it. And I don't know, can we restrict the use of an ADU to a specific type of uses where it could either be, I mean, I think originally ADUs were, you know, grandma wants to live out back. And then it turned into my kid and then it turned into, well, we could rent it to somebody else. And then somebody said, wow, we can rent it at a higher rate if we go day-to-day. There's a market for it. And again, you can argue that the homeowner who's trying to afford that house due to rising costs may say, well, this is the most profitable and the only way I can do it. I would prefer not to see that. Can we outlaw it, so to speak? Can we restrict it in some fashion?
Madam Chair, would you like me to respond?
Sure. So currently, the ordinance under D, this is 230-701D, says no ADU may be rented on less than a monthly basis. Short-term rentals of ADUs of less than a month in duration are prohibited. You can regulate short-term rentals. The city is, the city council is looking to create a short-term rental draft ordinance. We've had initial workshop discussion with them and they will be, the city itself will be piloting short-term rental software that's under development with Greater Portland Council of Governments to look at regulation, further regulation of short-term rentals. As you know, we, now we only have a seasonal rental ordinance.
So another question, not tied to ADUs, but as we approve subdivisions, can we restrict them or put deed restrictions in or requirements whereby you have to have owner occupancies for a certain period of time, say two years? In other words, you can't build 25 houses and sell them to a corporation who wants to rent them out at their rate?
So under the Affordable Housing Development standards, if you have affordable homes that are going to be sold, they have to be sold at, to someone who meets the affordability, eligibility requirement and that has to be forever up until 30 years.
Right.
Consistently.
I mean, I'm looking at a little less than maybe, maybe less than just the affordable home requirements, but more any development requirements.
Yeah, we don't have that right now and I would have to do some research as to how far you could restrict something like that.
I think that'd be a good idea to look into.
I think if you have the short-term rental ordinance too, though, you're going to get another level of enforcement. I mean, the software we're looking at actually searches Airbnb for us and will tell us where short-term rentals, where people are renting property in Saco, so there'll be a whole other level of enforcement to that and review.
But we currently do allow Airbnb short-term rental within Saco.
We have a seasonal rental ordinance and it's a certain section of the city that is supposed to only be where short-term rentals are occurring, that fall under that seasonal rental. Other than that, the city has been relatively silent on short-term rentals. However, the council is taking an active role in looking at regulating them.
Other board discussion?
I just have one additional comment. During city council workshop, and I don't know if Councilor Gunn wants to weigh in anything here, but I had left it with the council that we would do the LD 2003 round of ordinance revisions to make sure we could meet the January 1st timeline and then work with council to look at other affordability options for other affordable housing options in Saco, realizing that this is not going to be the end-all and be-all of affordable housing opportunities or, or ways that we can increase affordable housing. This is just one step and it is a required step by state law. So in order to meet the timeline, we had agreed at the city council workshop to do two sets of affordable housing, one of them being LD 2003 and the second being looking at affordable housing citywide and part of that housing action plan as well.
Thank you, Emily. Joyce, I saw you.
Oh, no, sorry. You, you may have just answered my question in terms of Linda's suggestions about reducing lot size and road frontage, that those issues wouldn't really be part of LD 2003 review, but might be something to consider later on.
Other board discussion? We do still have the hearing open, so I'll just go around the room one more time. Yep.
Hi, I'm Kate Scammon, Two Lyman Avenue, Unit Number Nine, Ward Seven. My question is regarding that we're talking about current like solutions, but what problems are going, we going to be creating long-term based off the current solutions we're trying to do? One of the languages talks about how the accessory dwelling units need to be attached to a single-family home and that it needs to be under one homeownership, which is great, but what you're doing is you're increasing that property value. And then when you go to sell that house, if the owner cannot basically partial off that property into either a condo unit, that they're going to then have the affordable rent, but they're going to then jack up like the $500 a month for your condo fees and it's no longer going to be affordable. Or they can't partial it off, all you're going to do is create larger property value and you're going to make things more expensive going forward in Saco. And so that's just kind of food for thought of how do you kind of combat that? And I would, again, just emphasize that I think it's all about kind of building, you know, smaller, affordable kind of cluster houses that can help people actually own their home and build wealth instead of just constantly be stuck in like a rental situation. So I would say that I thank you for your comments and I appreciate Ms. Clark saying nice things about Linda's comments. And thank you very much. Nice day.
Thank you, Kate. Anyone else here with us this evening? If you haven't had a chance to speak yet?
Hello, everyone. I'm Kelly Archer, 185 Bradley Street, Ward Five. I really am pleased to have heard Ms. Valentino's comments earlier. It's opened my mind as far as the RC zone. I did consider a lot of that conversation when I was on the ZORS committee. But when I think about what's fair and equitable for everyone in Saco, I'm now going to go home and rethink the 80,000 square feet to the 40,000 square feet with all the issues that we're confronted with today and also in the future. So I do appreciate opening my mind to an area that I hadn't thought about in depth. I, I do want clarification. Was this in the packet or just handed out tonight? Tonight? The fact that we are on audio and we're on video, I do want to thank the planner for getting Counselor Hatch's comments from a recent council meeting, but I do want to make sure it's read into the record for the audio and the video. This is information from Counselor Phil Hatch regarding LD 2003 housing ordinance revisions submitted to the planning department on June 30th, 2023. As we all know, the recently adopted comprehensive plan has numerous references to provide housing options within the Saco community. Specifically, Policy 3.1 states that the city should allow for and encourage a variety of housing options to meet the budgets and needs of the full spectrum of Saco residents, including aging baby boomers, young people, low-to-moderate income residents, first-time homebuyers, and new residents, end quote. Policy 3.1 Strategy B states, "Increase the amount of land zoned by right to permit attached single-family townhouse," end quotes, "in small-scale multifamily three-to-eight units in areas with existing public water and sewer." Policy 3.1 Strategy C states, "Decrease minimum lot size per dwelling in unit, in areas with existing public water and sewer to allow for smaller lots." In fairness to all citizens, it is my opinion, meaning Phil Hatch, that all property owners within the city should equitably share in the comprehensive plan's goals of increased density in areas with existing public water and sewer. To that end, and consistent with the intent of his comments made during last Monday's city council meeting, he requests that the proposed Table 3.3 permitted and conditional uses on page 44 of that city council packet of June 26 be modified as follows. Number one, affordable housing development, include this as a permitted use in the LDR zone. Number two, multifamily residential project up to eight units per building, include this as a conditional use in the LD zone. When I was on the ZORS committee and we... When I was on the ZORS committee, and we looked at all the dimensions and looked at the Table 3.3, 3-3, seven of those other districts that do have public and, and water and sewer are all included as permitted in your packet tonight, if you look at that. The page, I don't see the page number, but if you just go to that section of the housing.
Page 12.
Thank you very much. Seven of those districts all say permitted, and then when you look at the three-to-eight units, there is three that are permitted and four that are conditional use. I do believe in the fair and equitable of, of what the Complan goals and what we as all of Saco should be considering the fair and equitable across the board for everyone. So I wanted to read, read that into the record. Thank you very much. And, and I also appreciate the comments made by Board Member Glenn, sorry for charrette, as far as the sprinkler compensation and the 800 square feet. As some of you members did know that Mr. Pendleton, we did go over the sprinkler systems during the ZORS and the planning board process in depth, and thank you very much.
If anyone else has joined us this evening to speak on this, you're welcome to come forward now.
Madam Chair, seeing no further comment, I make a motion to close public hearing.
Thank you for the motion, Glenn. Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you for the second, Joyce. I'll call for a vote on closing the hearing, starting with Matt D.
Yes.
Joyce?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Glenn? And I'll vote yes as well. Motion passes 5-0. Okay, so Emily, next steps on this.
So the Planning Board is asked to produce a report to the City Council. Previously, I don't know if maybe a few members here might recall the ZOR process, so you, you presented a report with your findings. It's not, there's not a specific template for that report. We probably could do it as a memo format, and then maybe include minutes of your, with some reference to your discussion, and maybe the audio. And then we would, as staff, help facilitate getting that report back to the City Council. And then we will also, as staff, bring this back to the Long Range Planning Committee for their discussion as well. But your Planning Board discussion tonight, you as the Planning Board are asked to provide that report to City Council. I think it's important to look back too on the questions that you were asked specifically by City Council, and you can give some, some recommendations for any changes you may have through this process. We will capture those, and we will put them together in a report, a memo report for you. And just to clarify the process too, you'll probably want to compile your, your bullet items that we can help you work through today or, or at another meeting, and then you'll want to make a motion to forward that report.
Okay. Joe, do you have anything to add right now?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. In reflection of what Emily said a couple minutes ago, yes, it is the council's expectation, based on our discussions that we had about a month ago, that this process that you're all undertaking tonight is, and that the staff has prepared is simply to get us in compliance with the law, full stop. And in doing so, what Emily has provided with your discussions, that will occur. And the next steps that we can take in regards to a public comment that's been made tonight, especially reflected in Councillor Hatch's comments from about a month ago, that Councillor Berman made similar comments, and I've talked to them both privately, expressed my similar sentiments, that the council can go above and beyond what is required by LD 2003 to not only stay ahead of the law. So if, if and when the legislature wants to present us with any more directives, though, much like we are in this situation, we're not having to play catch-up the way that many communities that don't have, that believe it or not, do not have anything close to what we have in terms of progressive zoning to encourage growth and encourage a variety of housing options. Saco already has that. So that's why we're in such good shape as we are. But that being said, the housing crisis as it is, there is consensus among councillors that, that, that this doesn't go far enough in terms of what we can do in terms of having what's called inclusulatory housing. Brunswick simply passed, passed an ordinance a couple months ago that when it comes to large-scale housing developments, that it requires a certain amount to be affordable housing. And affordable, basically, the, I think City Council can pretty much decide what is affordable in the sense that market rates would be out the window, it would be whatever we would consider would be fair and equitable for our communities. So these are just things that we've discussed informally. We're going to have a workshop on coming soon, but as I said, that's a whole separate thing from this. But just to, just to give the Planning Board and the public some context, that once we are in compliance with the law, the council intends to continue to press the issue to make a fair and equitable situation for the entire city, and to take full advantage of what is essentially what we're allowed to do because of the inflammation of 2003, not to mention our own political will. And the political will currently is, informally, is that more needs to be done for housing, and we are going to do it one way or the other. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Board members, any other discussion? Questions for Emily right now on next steps? Can you speak into your mic?
You mentioned the Planning Board needs to get a memo to the council. Can you describe a little clearer how that works?
Sure. So what you're asked to do is to present us with, almost like your findings, Glenn, and then we will help you compile that. The planning staff will take it back, compile it into a memo from Saco Planning Board to the City Council, and then we will send that along, if, if that's what the Planning Board votes on tonight or another night to move something, move your comments forward. We will send your consolidated comments in a memo to the City Council.
Got you. Thank you.
And Emily, I think I'd prefer that we vote on that at a future meeting, especially because we have some members absent who might want to weigh in and add some more info into it. Okay.
Is there something that we should proactively prepare? Did you want to give us a few comments now, and then we can prepare a draft for the next meeting so that you can get eyes on kind of like the formatting and, and what you're going to be sending?
I don't see why not. I know you had some questions specific, right, from Council, Emily, at the start of this?
Uh, yes, and maybe, maybe those need the full board weigh-in, but we can certainly get some initial feedback on them.
Okay, so Joe, I'm going to turn back to you, put you on the spot with this. Do you want to add any more info on these three topic areas?
Not specifically. As I said, these were just general areas that, of the city that some councillors wanted to have some clarification on in terms of whether or not Planning Board, I assume, would feel it's appropriate to include those with sort of growth areas or things of that nature. So it was basically if it's Planning Board members kind of look at those areas and see, do you think it's appropriate to have such and such and what's such areas, though. I know we have a couple of councillors here, though, that included some of those comments, and so it might be prudent to actually, I know we've closed the public hearing, though, but you can always get their second opinion on that.
So maybe it would be helpful for me to bring up the zoning map, and we can kind of pinpoint some of these areas, and then I can point you to the Comp Plan sections. Some sections, you could certainly do your own research. You don't have to give me feedback now. We can always provide just kind of like a blank template with fill-in bullet items for your next meeting. But we can at least do that review now, and then you can take away your, your thoughts, and then come back to the next meeting.
Okay.
Just bear with me here, almost there. So we have this map. This is the zoning map for Saco here, and this is actually available in our online city code. The areas that we were looking at that were brought up for affordable housing development was Saco Island, this area here, and then this is just a blown-up version of that.
So Emily, in terms of what's already been approved out on Saco Island right now?
So many people will be familiar that there's already development out there that, I don't know if you can see my cursor, but, but one half of the, the island is pretty much already fully historically developed with larger structures. I believe some of those may have affordable housing in them already. I think in the back, behind some of the structures, there's affordable housing. And then on the right side, we have recently, the boards recently reviewed and approved a 24-townhouse, 24-unit townhouse development on, on Saco Island East. That's under construction, under site work right now for construction.
So what is left in the Saco Island zone for opportunities to develop anything?
Well, I think some of the structures could be redeveloped over time. So I guess I'll go to the next, the next section.
I don't really have a lot of comments on Saco Island. I think it's a zone that's pretty much taking care of itself right now.
The next one is LDR, which has come up. LDR is low-density residential, so anything in this lighter yellow color. And then also, LDR exists over in this area here, up in this area here, a little bit over here, and then in this area over here.
So the area you just highlighted that's along just a strip of roadway to the left out near RC?
This here?
Yep. Is that 112?
Yes.
So for instance, if we took one of the larger parcels there, where there's a strip of LDR, and then the back of the lot is an RC, what would happen in that case?
Currently, the, the way that the ordinance is drafted for low-density residential is you could have up to two dwelling units on a vacant lot, as long as you meet the minimum lot area per dwelling unit, which I believe is 10,000 square feet in the LDR. When you get into the, the RC zone, we do have a provision in our code where you can bring some of the LDR zone 100 feet into the property. So you could do that potentially and still be in that zone a little bit farther into the RC, and then you could use those zoning provisions. If an existing house is on one of these lots out here and it's in LDR, you can have up to two dwelling units, one that's attached and one that's detached. And I believe that would be the same for RC, provided, again, that you could get the lot area per dwelling unit. It was mentioned tonight, the RC lot area per dwelling unit is high, so it would be a little more difficult to get that in the RC than in the, the LDR. You would also have to prove wastewater connection and well connection, and that capacity was there to serve. So out here, I'm not sure how, if that would be as easy as in some other areas of the city.
Right. Again, to me, that strikes me as an area of LDR that at least might just take care of itself because of restrictions in place with not having public utilities. But obviously, there's a much larger swath of LDR, which I think is the intention behind the memo we have. So Board members, any feedback on that?
The questions the councillors had, are those in our packet somewhere?
That's in the presentation we can send out to you. And we can also send you the recording from the council meeting if you wanted to listen to it.
I think this LDR question is only coming from one councillor, and we have the memo related to it, right?
There were two, two questions from, one question from two councillors, so it seemed like the council in general wanted some, some feedback on these. So basically, the ask was, as the Planning Board looks to make its report, can the Planning Board look at these several items? Have I captured that correctly, Councillor Gunn?
Oh, sir. Pardon me. Yes, based on my recollection, recollection, it was just a basic, general reaction just to those areas without any specific questions, unless I'm mistaken on that regards, though. But just those areas of interest, they were just looking for any and all feedback that they could get, though, because I think it would inform our conversation when it gets to the council level.
So perhaps the Planning Board would like to take these kind of questions, digest them, and come back on September 5th, maybe when you have more board members present. I can also just show you that where you can access the Comp Plan on our website, too, so you can take a look at that in the meantime.
That sounds fine to me. Any other last-minute comments on this, questions?
I'm just thinking, when you're talking about subdivision restrictions, that's, that's another issue that might take care of itself.
I think, yeah.
In many areas of LDR, because I think a lot of those houses.
Wide range of LDR takes care of itself. I also think we've run into a lot of traffic concerns in other zones throughout the city that have far more connectivity throughout them. And I think this strikes me as an area that, to throw up onto the pedestal of areas to take up something like this, I just, it flies in the face of what we've been dealing with over the last few years as a board. So, but I'd love more time to put some comments together.
So the Comprehensive Plan update has its own webpage. It's available on our Planning Department page. You can click for the approved Comp Plan. You can also see our info sheet, but that's a side note. So go to the approved Comp Plan, and then you can look at the future land use plan sections in here. If you go to the index, it's, it's pretty helpful.
Okay. Anything else on this item tonight, Emily?
Perhaps just a, a motion to continue the review to September 5th.
Sure.
Move to continue the review of this issue to September 5th meeting.
Thank you for the motion, Joyce. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Thank you for the second. Rob? I'll call for a vote on continuing this, starting with Matt D.
Yes.
Joyce?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Glenn?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes as well. Motion passes 5-0. Thank you. Okay, we're going to take a short break and reset the room, and then we'll take up our third item. Thank you. third item. Thank you. Okay, so the third item on our agenda, I'm just making sure we have everyone back in the room. Rob, your back, stretching. Okay, the third item on our agenda this evening is final subdivision review for 321 Lincoln Street, which is Lincoln Village subdivision. This is at 321 Lincoln, map 52, Lot 19, in the MDR zone. This evening, we'll incorporate application completeness review only. So, we will get started with this?
Madam Chair.
Glenn?
I'll recuse myself from this review.
Thank you, Glenn. Okay. That being taken care of, Emily, I'll turn to you as we get this started this evening.
Great, thank you. So, the planning board on June 29th was the last time that you saw the preliminary subdivision application, as well as the conditional use and site plan applications. At that time, the planning board issued approval for site plan application, site location of development designated review, and conditional use review, as well as preliminary subdivision. As part of that review process, and the approval process for preliminary subdivision, as well as conditional, as well as the other approvals, there was a list of draft conditions, some of which had to be fulfilled before final subdivision review. So what staff has done is, we received the application on July 25th. We made it available on our website, notified the public that we had it, did the notification to budding property owners, and now we're here tonight looking at application completeness review. So this is a similar process we took for the preliminary subdivision review. This, for a quick overview, is applicant 321 Lincoln Street, represented by Drew Gaggen of Gorel Palmer, proposes a 332-unit residential development at 321 Lincoln Street, approximately 56.7 acres of undeveloped land. Proposal consists of housing within a mix of eight-unit buildings, duplexes, and single-family residences with associated site amenities and improvements. The proposal will result in approximately 28 acres of developed area, off-site public improvements, and onsite private infrastructure. We gave you a list here of the review history, of the, of the dates where other meeting materials can be found throughout the review process. So again, tonight, we're looking at whether or not the application can be found complete based on Section 188-503 for final subdivision application review. We have provided a checklist of items based on the language of the ordinance that we have. And then I also just want to say that we have Attorney Phil Saucier here present, who's the consulting attorney. We've been using Attorney Phil Saucier, as well as Attorney, City Attorney Tim Murphy, throughout this review process. And then since we are starting a final review, if there's any type of perceived conflicts or anything that we want to report out, the board can certainly do that at this time. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Emily. Rob, I see your hand up.
Yeah, as we started this review once before, when I moved into this ward on, I think it was the 1st of November of last year, I mentioned that I am indeed living at 334 Lincoln, number, unit number one, which is across the street from this property. And I asked at that time if there were any concerns either from my fellow board members as well as the applicant, and at that time, it was no, and so I'm asking again.
Thank you, Rob. Turn to my colleagues first, Joyce.
I personally don't have any issue with Rob serving, and I, I know that he actually does live on Lincoln Street.
I have no concerns either with the, Rob's residence or being, living on that street.
Thank you, Matt and Joyce, and I also agree and feel the same. So thank you, Rob.
Applicant?
Yeah, applicant. Drew's here with us this evening.
Thank you, Chair. Drew Gaggen with Gorel Palmer. We have no issue or, or any conflict there. Thank you.
Thank you, Drew.
And I know there's been an issue raised about me being law partners with the city attorney, Tim Murphy, which has been disclosed many times since I first joined the planning board. And yes, I still am law partners with Tim Murphy, have been since before I joined the board. I've mentioned it at the start of various public hearings over the years when the city was involved. To my recollection, the only involvement that Attorney Murphy has had with this particular application was advising us regarding our procedures, what to do if we had a tie vote, that sort of thing. I did notice in the materials that he's also listed as a signer on the deed to the applicant because he's one of the trustees of the Lucia Kimball-Dering Trust. I work on a different floor from him. We don't talk about planning board matters, but I certainly would want to disclose it and if anybody has an issue with that connection, including the applicant, that now's the time to raise it.
Thank you, Joyce. Obviously, I've heard you say it many, many times before. It's nothing new to us, but it might be new in circulation out in the world. I've had no issue in the past. I continue to have no issue with it, and I think, especially in this situation, we've had continued review of our process and, and how we're approaching this application from Phil Saucier. So it's not as if Tim Murphy's been the only one working on this application with the city.
Yeah, and I have no issues. I find you to be an upstanding member of the board who's always impartial, I feel, at all times, so I have no problems with, with that.
I'm good. I have no issue with that.
Thank you, Rob. So Drew, just for formality, will have you come up one more time?
Thank you. We appreciate the update. We have no issue.
Thank you, Drew. Okay, board members, any other comments as we get started on this discussion this evening of application completeness? Not hearing any. So Emily, you've organized a checklist for us, which is very helpful. So, starting on page two of our packet, and I can see you've marked some areas as, with a check mark, meaning they're complete, and then some areas obviously have more detailed comments on them. So at this point tonight, with the review that we're doing this evening, is this checklist still pretty much up to date? Have there been any changes to it since you drafted it for our packet?
The only change was under the items required for preliminary subdivision review to be submitted before final subdivision review, where it says, provide provisions for closed drainage along the new curb line for sidewalk along northerly side of Lincoln Street before final subdivision review. I did check with the city engineer, that one has been followed up on by the applicant. So that's the, the only one that's...
Meaning that you would have, had you updated this checklist today, you would have put a check mark next to it as complete?
Yes.
Okay. But that's the only change on the chart itself?
That's the only change, and we did have a, a meeting with Drew yesterday with the city engineer, Drew and me, to go over the city engineer review comments that are included in the after-the-fact meeting packet. And went, and went over some of these items that are to be remaining.
Okay, so board members, any questions right now for Emily on the status of these items? Joyce?
So basically, are we just updating the applicant so that we have an agreement on what items are pending, and then agreeing to continue this to a later meeting?
Correct. So tonight, we're, you can, the board can take a few paths. You can go through it and say that you, you actually find the application complete. You can go through it and... it and discuss the items that are on the checklist with the applicant, and just give a clear list from this checklist of those items that the applicant should return with. I think the applicant has some good direction from staff, but if there's anything from the board that needs to be included, that would be good. Just keep in mind that this, any feedback obviously is binding. This isn't like a sketch plan review. It's binding feedback that you give the applicant.
Okay, great. So, Drew, maybe we have you join us and just go through this together with us. So, I'll focus on the items that have comments in the status column. So, the first being 188-503D is in relation to the easement language. That's something that, am I right, the applicant is still drafting?
No, no, Chair. So, we've submitted condominium documents during the first preliminary subdivision, which is over a year ago. We've updated that a few times since then. On July 20th, I believe, we provided access, actually physically drafted access easements, giving rights to the city of Saco to go through the main access road. I've been told there are comments. We have not seen them yet. We're happy to address them, and we have our attorney on standby, ready to do that as soon as I can get those comments.
I should just interject here, that part of the reason why staff wrote that as pending updates to draft is because the way that language is worded, it says, "And written evidence that the city's attorney is satisfied with the legal sufficiency of the documents." So, we did get that on preliminary review, as far as attorney Saucier was here, did review the initial master declaration. We just need it for the final review. So, there are some comments that will be sent to the applicant on those items as well.
Okay. So, that is something you are waiting for from us. Okay. So, 188-503E, as far as plan notations. That seems pretty straightforward.
Correct.
Any questions for us or city staff on that item?
Nope.
Okay. And then, it looks like, under the preliminary section, I'm jumping down there, because I see check marks on the other items. So, before final review, revisions to plans set required by city staff are peer reviewed. So, this is, Emily, related to the meeting you had with Joe, correct?
Yes, there's just the list that the board received here to go over.
Okay. And then, the next item, as far as access drive language provided, some additional easement information should be documented. Is that something we're waiting on the applicant for, or from us?
So, we have the access easement language. What we're just looking for is making sure that we have the easement language for anything that is referenced as an easement on the plan.
Okay. So, Drew, you're clear on next steps on that item?
Yes.
Okay. And then, it looks like, the next item is the one you just referenced, Emily, that actually has been taken care of as of this evening. So, we can change that into a check mark on providing provisions for closed drainage. And then, the next item's related to the TMP. So, again, is this something that is just a matter of time, as far as the process?
So, the TMP, the traffic movement permit, has been issued by the main DOT. What we are waiting for is a traffic movement permit agreement to be acknowledged by the TMP, by the DOT, and then moving forward with that with the applicant. So, we're waiting a little bit on the DOT and a little bit on the city.
And then, the next item is in regards to construction sequencing. So, it looks like there's outstanding staff comments on that item.
So, the applicant updated the construction sequencing plan, based off of additional staff comments after the preliminary review process, and we just had a few more we asked to be updated on the plan.
So, that seems straightforward.
Yep.
And then, we have, finally, the last item, looks like a landscaping peer review that's still underway.
Yes, and again, the applicant did submit the landscaping plan. The comment, the condition from the planning board was to coordinate with the peer reviewer, and our peer reviewer is finishing up her look at that as well. So, there will be comments back to Drew's team on that, as soon as I receive them.
Okay. Okay, so, board members, that seems like it's the overview on where we stand, in terms of the application materials itself. Any discussion on this right now? Joyce?
Seems like the applicant understands and agrees. So, I mean, is it, makes sense to ask when this could all be completed? I mean, would it be in time for the September 5th meeting, or should we just continue to, a date to be determined?
I think the September 5th meeting would be, would be safe.
Drew, do you feel like that's an adequate timeline?
Absolutely. Our, our development team, completing our end of the comments, are essentially almost done, since I got the comments last Monday, so I know we can do that.
Okay. So, Emily, maybe between this evening's meeting and a future meeting, if it falls on the 5th or at another date, we could continue to use this chart that you've created, and as you add checkboxes to them for the items that are still outstanding tonight, could you say, as of whatever date, so we can kind of track the ones that are still outstanding?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so, as far as a motion to continue, Emily, you'd like it to incorporate a firm date, or a future date?
I think you should incorporate a firm date. September 5th would be good.
Okay.
So, Madam Chair, I move to table this matter to the September 5th meeting.
Thank you for the motion, Joyce. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you for the second. Rob, any further discussion of the motion? Not hearing any. I'll call for a vote, starting with Matt D.
Yes.
Joyce?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes as well. Motion passes 4-0. Okay. Thank you, Drew. Thank you, everyone. Okay, the fourth item on our agenda this evening is a site plan and conditional use review for a facility expansion, with the addition of an 18,620-square-foot warehouse and 2,400-square-foot self-storage building at 4 Lerner Road, which is tax map 69, lot 8, in the BI zone. The applicant is All Purpose Storage, Saco LLC, represented by Sabego Technics. And this was something that we had on our agenda for July 18th, but there was not enough time in that meeting. It was continued to August 1st, and then, at the request of the applicant, tabled until this evening. So, we will start first with a staff introduction from Emily, and then work our way back through this item. And Glenn, thank you for joining us again.
Thank you. This application, 4 Lerner Road, we started to review this. We have a recap here. Back on April 18th, the board provided some initial feedback and continued application review, pending additional submission items for a complete application. On July 18th, the application was scheduled to be heard, but there was not enough time to hear it, so it was continued to August 1st. And on August 1st, the applicant requested that the review be moved to tonight's meeting. So, the overview is the applicant, All Purpose Storage, requests site plan and conditional use review for construction of an 18,620-square-foot warehouse structure to be rented as flex space for future tenants. Applicant indicates space could be for either one tenant, or up to four tenants. The applicant also includes 2,400-square-foot expansion to existing metal building for additional self-storage space, and the proposed project includes parking, stormwater features, associated improvements, as noted on the plans. It's already developed property with similar structures, approximately 3.95 acres. In the business industrial zoning, just direct to our contractor's or tradesperson, its permitted use and self-storage is a conditional use. The board is asked to look at both conditional use and site plan reviews. As we get farther along, we'll talk a little bit more about parking, design guidelines, and traffic. This, we should just flag this now, that the parking is a discussion point for the board, relative to the number of parking spaces provided, and the applicant's request to have a reduction in the number of those spaces. So, the board tonight is asked to find the, whether they finds the application complete, and then hold a public hearing, discuss some of those items, and determine if it's appropriate to deliberate on the application. Thank you.
Thank you, Emily. Board members, questions right now for city staff on how we're approaching this this evening? Okay, not hearing any. Emily, there's no waiver request, correct?
Not for application completeness review.
Okay. So, board members, any questions in regards to application completeness first? And if not, I'll look for a motion.
Madam Chair, I move to find the application for 4 Lerner Road for conditional use review and site plan review complete.
Thank you for the motion, Joyce. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you for the second, Rob. I'll call for a vote on application completeness, starting with Matt D.
Yes.
Joyce?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Glenn? And I'll vote yes as well. Motion passes 5-0. Okay, let's turn to the applicant now.
Hello. Thank you, board. Chris Taylor with Sabego Technics, professional engineer, representing the applicant, All Purpose Storage. I think Emily gave a very good overview of the project. I just wanted to highlight that this facility has been built out over a number of years. A couple of years ago, the lot was split and separated off the office building, which is in the, at the corner of Lerner Road and Industrial Park Road. That's a separate lot now, and the current applicant and owner of the site, All Purpose Storage, acquired the existing self-storage and contractor flex space buildings that were on the property. They're, they're asking for, or looking for approval on this further expansion, and which would kind of finalize the development potential on the site, and result in the full build-out of the site.
Thank you, Chris. And I think, maybe the last time we saw you in April, we were talking about that existing building on the corner, and my understanding is that's not in business right now. Is that right? It looks like it's kind of vacant.
I'm not sure of the, of the current. I do know it, after the lot was split, that it, the use of the, it was historically an office building. It changed uses, but I'm not sure of the current business standing of that.
Okay, but it hasn't reverted back to the original owner, or anything like that, relating to the self-storage?
Not that I'm aware of.
It's still under separate ownership?
The, the applicant does not own that, as far as I'm aware.
Okay, board members, other questions right now for this applicant? Rob? Yeah, that corner building. And I think I was mainly bringing it up during the last time we saw you, because we obviously went in-depth on that building and that use that we approved for parking. So, just in the way of saying, okay, there is not an existing parking issue on that corner lot right now, that's causing any overflow issues to your lot. It seems like it's really been vacant. Mm-hmm. Yep.
That's correct.
Yep.
And you're proposing the, the building in the back, which is the 18,620 square feet, correct? Is that other proposed self-storage building, the 2,400 square feet, is that part of this?
That is. It's an expansion off one of the current buildings.
Of that current building, yeah. And then, this freestanding building.
Yeah, so, everything that has like the hash marks on them are existing, right, Chris? And then, the bold outlines are the proposed?
Correct.
Okay, so, parking-wise, what is the business model, as far as like consumer use of these buildings?
Well, in terms of, so, we did kind of an analysis on the existing parking, as well, and the uses associated with that, as well as this proposed expansion. In terms of the self-storage, we kind of view that as a, no dedicated parking spaces required, just because of the nature of the type of use. People pulling up, they kind of park next to the unit, offload, unload. It's kind of self-regulating, and not any dedicated parking spaces needed. The existing contractor flex space buildings on the site, which are in the kind of bottom middle, those two buildings in the, in the middle, lower portion of the site, those have adequate parking. They've been there for a number of years now, and are able to, the occupants are able to park in front of the building, and there hasn't seemed to be any issue. The warehouse that's being proposed, yeah.
Sorry to cut you off, but are those spots in front of those flex buildings dedicated, or just first-come, first-served?
They're kind of, they're not even fully marked, I wouldn't say. They're...
It's just like open paved area that makes sense to park in?
That's available for them to park.
Okay.
There's also room behind the smaller building, that's really not used. There's drive aisles, but they're underutilized, I would say, where cars can park as well. For the proposed building, the warehouse, or kind of an oversized light industrial building, we are showing the 11 parking spaces for that building, which is less than what the, the ordinance requires for a warehouse use. I don't think that, the applicant doesn't really intend to use this as a, as a warehouse, per se. More of a light industrial, which doesn't have a defined use for the park, in the ordinance for parking required. That's kind of, but we listed it as a warehouse, did the calculation based on a warehouse. The applicant feels that this is the parking that's, would be necessary for the proposed use, and any tenant that comes in to occupy the space is going to be cognizant of the parking ability on the site, and is going to have to kind of meet their needs as well. There's also, there are other places on the site where you could temporarily store vehicles, if maneuvering was required. There's large open space, kind of in the middle, between the self-storage and the contractor flex space, where vehicles or equipment can, could be loaded, or a truck could be idling, and, or, you know, temporarily standing for a spot to become available. And that's just something that would have to be kind of coordinated on the site, if, if that case were to arise.
Is your intention to stripe all these parking spots that you've labeled here?
The parking spaces in front of the warehouse would intended to be, would be striped, yes.
But not in front of those lower buildings?
Yes, those were just representations of what is currently available on the site. Those seem to be self-managed, and not an issue with those buildings.
What is the existing use of the metal, self-storage building? Is that just, I mean, I can't quite tell, but is it just grade-level residential kind of storage? Is that what that is?
That's, that's correct. It's...
And then, you want to add on to that, another 2,400 square feet, similar type situation?
Yeah, that would be available to rent, you know, small, small bays of 10 by 10, 20 by 20, something like that.
Right. And so, that is, so where do these customers come to rent this space?
It's typically all handled online. The applicant does have, they've got a, they're a, they've got multiple locations under the All Purpose Storage name, and so they have a presence online with multiple locations. They do have a facility manager at each location, in case something arises and can be handled, but it's all handled online.
Okay, so, in the back, is this grade level, there's no docks, that kind of thing? And these are overhead doors that you're sort of showing? There's five of them?
There, there is one, the center one is a drop dock, so there would be a...
That's what I'm looking at, with the, with the retaining...
Two bars that are coming out...
Two bars that are coming out, yeah.
Those would be retaining walls with guardrails-
Right.
-on either side of it.
So that, that's a drive down below grade, creating dock level off the other?
That's correct. The, one of the existing contractor flex space buildings has a, a similar, you know, a drop dock or loading dock on the far left end of it, and that kind of works in, the grade slopes off as you go from right to left on the page, so that kind of just naturally falls in line.
So realistically, with these parking spaces that you're showing in front, you know, several of them are right in front of a dock or a door, an overhead door. So, I mean, realistically, parking, it'd be kind of hard to park a car there if you're working in this building with, or, or consider them parking spaces if you're actively using these overhead doors, no?
Yes, there would be, the, there's potential, depending on the type of tenant, to store their vehicles or fleet equipment inside the building itself for parking as well. If that were, depending on the type of use or tenant that comes in. And that's what, what kind of happens with the light industrial buildings that exist on the site. There's, there are overhead doors in front of where the, the parking spaces are shown, they, and they're able to manage, you know, a lot of times they're leaving their, their work vehicle at this site overnight outside. We need to get inside during the day to load equipment, that sort of equip, and that sort of thing. So we envision a, a similar scenario happening with this larger building as well.
Can't quite read the drawing. The doors are 11-foot high? Is that roughly?
Yes.
Yeah.
Rob, any further questions on that?
Not, well, one more. So the entrance to this building would be off of Lainer Road, obviously that, that proposed entrance, the, the north in the drawing, it's actually, I guess it would be north. On the north side of the property there, is that?
There are, currently, there's two entrances. Those two entrances currently exist to the facility, so we just, there's not an entrance off of Industrial Park Road. There used to be an entrance. That was removed as part of the, the lot split, I believe, and that has since been, the, the pavement's been removed and it's been landscaped. We're proposing some additional landscaping where that, where that entrance was because of the trees didn't really, the landscape islands didn't get built up there as part of the existing development, so we're, we're infilling that as part of this development plan.
You're good, Rob. Thank you. Other comments? I think personally, in terms of the parking, I think clearly you've shown a nature of use there that has been okay for what's on site. I just, I'm leaning towards the waiver you're requesting to reduce the number of spots, but then I would want all the spots striped. Doesn't really make sense to me for us to say, yes, you're okay with 28 spots, and then have a handful of them not really dictated on the face of the earth. Joyce, see what your hand up?
I was actually going to say something similar as far as the existing metal buildings, those parking spaces also being striped, but also just clarifying that this large warehouse building, that's not going to be something where members of the public are going to come and park and enter. Is it, is it all going to be industrial-type use, or, or is there a possibility that there would be people unfamiliar with the property?
You mean like a retail-type component?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I don't, well, the, the intent is not to have a retail component with any sort of like light industrial. There may be a, a scenario where someone comes to, it's typically tradespersons. So, someone, member of the public, or someone that's hiring or contracting with that tradesperson, comes to their location to either discuss a project or view materials that they have, something like that. So there is a potential for that, but it, it's, it's a less common occurrence, we'll put it that way.
In terms of the building design, so right now, clearly, like page five of our packet outlines the design guidelines, and there's some notes in there that, right now, these buildings do not incorporate windows. Have you given any further thought to?
Yeah, the, in terms of the, the building plans themselves, they are, what I'd say, not finalized in terms of their, the applicant's looking at doing more detailed designs on the building once they've got a, a commitment from a tenant, and looking to kind of accommodate the needs of what the tenant would want in the building in, in terms of office placement, window placement, and that sort of thing. We would, I guess, ask that, that be kind of handled as a condition of approval if possible, that we, we come back with further detailed building drawings showing compliance with the ordinance in terms of window location materials and that sort of thing.
You mean at the time of like leasing the spaces out?
It could, the timing of it could be prior to occupancy, prior to, you know, at the pre-construction meeting, something like that.
Mm-hmm. Okay. I think we're missing a board member tonight who would have a lot of comments for you, so I'm trying to wear his hat in his, in his honor. I think that, you know, we don't typically leave a metal building with no design details on it unnoticed. So, I'm not quite sure how we could approach this, given that you don't quite have the tenant in place. Emily, thoughts on like prior to occupancy and that kind of component? We don't normally see someone for design review at that level.
So, we did run into this with the Phase Two question just recently. So, the board could require a site plan amendment. I think it would be prudent that the board review the design and not staff, because we, as staff, usually don't review the designs, other than to do a rev, initial review for the board. But before, the other thing, it's sort of, occupancy isn't a bad idea, it's just that our code office is going to want to know where the windows are supposed to be. So, I think maybe before building permit issuance, if, if the board gets to that point.
Okay. I think that makes sense, and I know like in Joe LaVere's memo, there was a note about screening mechanical equipment as well, correct? And you weren't quite sure where that would be?
Yeah, I, I think in the level of design on just not knowing what the exact equipment's going to be, we can add some detail once that's kind of finalized and determined, and that, that goes, that kind of goes hand in hand with how the building is split up.
Okay. So in terms of like prior to a building permit being issued, do you think that would be adequate for a design meeting with us?
I think that's appropriate, given that, that the building has to be, the building drawings have to be at a higher level for that building, or the, the building permit to be issued. So, I agree with that.
Okay.
So, what we're being asked to do is approve a building that has no windows or doors, a roof, it does have a roof, and it has 11 parking spaces, but we don't know what kind of business is going in.
With a potential condition that they come back to us for a design meeting prior to starting the building, which puts the pressure on the applicant to-
Yeah, I mean, well, because I read earlier that it might be, could be multi-tenant, could be different types of businesses going in-
Right.
-tradesmen, et cetera. Okay, so it's like a monopoly house, just sort of a block waiting for something.
It's a footprint, in my mind, at this point, with a material type, we can envision it, right, as a starting point?
The other option is the board is not required to condition anything like that. If you wanted to ask the applicant to return to you with a design that meets the design guidelines, that's, that's an option as well.
Well, I mean, I understand that they don't know what type of business would go in, but I would think that, having built a ton of flex buildings myself in the past, you kind of have a design and a layout, and then you can chop it up different ways, obviously. And I understand the whole idea, the, the, the mechanicals, they may not want mechanicals. You know, you may have little, very little HVAC or needed or required according to what businesses move in here. But it seems like there'd be a little bit of kind of basic exterior design at this point, and then find, you know, targeted towards the type of, of tenants you're, you're looking for versus, we've got a big square building here, let's see who we can rent it to. Just my opinion, having built millions of square feet of flex space.
Mm-hmm.
So.
I'm personally fine either way. If we take this in a direction of saying to the applicant, we want to keep continuing this until we have a design that we're satisfied with, or we get to the point where we maybe decide that we can approve a starting point and have a condition that brings them back to us at a future date before they start construction.
Yeah, I guess, depending on type of business going in, parking may be required in a much bigger way than currently is anticipated. You know, it's, the idea is, we don't think that the kind of businesses are going to move in here, but what if? You don't find those type and you want to rent to somebody that has a much more heavier parking need, what do you do then? You can't create parking that doesn't exist, because you don't have a big lot out back that you can, unless you have the ability to buy the lot out back. But, I mean, I don't see a lot of potential expansion of parking within the current confines of the drawing.
Okay, so while we're mulling this over, this has been advertised this evening as a public hearing, and I do think it would make sense to open that up, given that the public was noticed, and maybe we have people with us tonight for this.
Public hearing.
Thank you for the motion, Joyce. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you for the second, Rob. I'll call for a vote on opening the hearing, starting with Matt D.
Yes.
Joyce?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Glenn?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes as well. Motion passes five zero to open the public hearing. So if you've joined us this evening to speak on this item, this again is a site plan and conditional use review for, for Lainer Road, which is tax map 69 Lot 8 in the BI Zone. You're welcome to come forward now and just start with your name and address for our records.
Hello again, Kelly Archer, 185 Bradley Street, Ward 5. I spoke to you once before as far as flex contractors, tradespeople in a flex unit, flex space, and about stronger language in the article, I believe it's six, and the Good Neighbor standards. When I look at this, the fact that we don't know if it's one or up to four, we don't know who these people are, can we get stronger language in this? Because when I look at, again, at storage and handling of chemicals, again, we don't know who they are, and it says explosive or hazardous chemicals not anticipated, state and federal laws apply. But now I look at the local laws and, and what we can do as, you know, citizens, planning board, in order to protect not only that unit, but if something does happen, odors or chemicals or explosions, or, we don't know what they're bringing in. So, I think if there is, if they have a contract, the applicant, that says what the permitted uses are, whatever that contract would be for the one or up to four, in order to say, absolutely no, you can't have explosive materials 23603. They say none proposed, but how do we know if it's none proposed? We don't know who they are. When I look at some of the other, I think where I'm having a problem is where it says are anticipated. We're talking about future tenants. I mean, the applicant, I could come up as the applicant, I don't anticipate any of this, and I have a contract that says it doesn't have it in there, but what do we have as a city and also, to also protect this and not just the state and federal laws? And then when we look at the, you know, when you look at the sanitary waste, I like that one because it says floor drains shall be prohibited for this project. So can we get stronger language on the things that could affect not only that unit, but how many hundreds of feet or a mile or whatever that might, someone might bring in, and something happens? How are we protecting ourselves? So again, I'm back up here for stronger language. And then how does the applicant prohibit or audit what is going in there? How is that done? And can they explain that to you? Thank you so much.
Okay, we don't have too many people left in the room, so I'll just make another call for the public hearing on this item, if you've joined us this evening to speak
Madam Chair, not seeing anyone else coming forward, I move to close the public hearing.
Thank you for the motion, Joyce. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you for the second, Rob. I'll call for a vote on closing the hearing, starting with Matt D.
Yes.
Joyce?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Glenn?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes as well. Motion passes five zero. Okay, back to board discussion.
Yeah, I've got a, so regarding the explosive materials and such, I believe we, that would be a code issue, would it not be, Emily? And since we don't have Dave Toomey here, but we do have an explosive expert in the back of the room, could we have him come up here maybe and just give us a comment?
We do have Dave Pendleton with us. We also, board members, I just want to turn over to page 13 of our packet as well, item 21. But Dave, maybe we invite you up. So, and actually, I'll read this because I think it'll fall under what you explained to us as well. But, right now, we have a condition drafted in here that says, "The City of Saco shall regulate all business uses proposed for these flex spaces through the submission of completed business licenses and wastewater discharge applications. The wastewater recovery district has the right to recalculate gallons per day flows and impact fees based on the needs of the businesses." So, in this regard, when someone completes an application for a business license in one of these spaces, your department is reviewing that as well, correct, with code?
A new business license, not necessarily. More often not, it'd be a fire safety inspection that, that would visit the building, unless they were like a vituums. We do work with vituums license inspections.
Would that, would that be after they've already got a business license and moved in and all that sort of thing? Then maybe, there may be a, a fire safety inspection, or is it-
Well-
-part of the startup?
Sure. The fire department is certainly part of the, like, the, the final inspection for certificate of occupancy, so, so I would expect we would know at that point, you know, what's going on.
What they're moving in with and that sort of thing.
Yeah. However, the, I'm not sure about the building code, what that might say, like, Dave Toomey could tell us, but on, on the, on the fire code side, there are, I want to say, charts and references to maximum allowable quantities.
Mm-hmm.
So, so it tells you what specific types of, of materials, I won't say chemicals, but materials can be stored. So, so the types and the amounts. So, there would be a reference to that chart to provide some guidance on how they determine what is allowable.
So if a business comes to Dave Toomey's office and wants to occupy one of these spaces, and they have combustible material of some kind incorporated into their business, that's something that he'd be reviewing potentially with you?
Yeah, probably together.
Right, so he would call you.
And you know me, I'm, I'm quick to, to call the fire marshal and ask their opinion on what they might do. I believe the, the building calls for sprinklers. they might do. I believe the building calls for sprinklers, or that was the plan to sprinkle. So that gives them some flexibility to do something maybe a little bit more hazardous than if it was not sprinkled.
But again, that's due to our code.
Pardon me?
That's due to Saco's code and the state fire marshal's code.
The requirement for sprinklers?
Yeah. No, if we have sprinklers, you're saying that they can maybe have more solvents or more gasoline or more?
Yeah, exactly. And that again will go back to the maximum allowable.
Because it's sprinkled. Without sprinkled, it'd be a lesser amount.
Correct.
Or none.
Potentially.
Okay. But again, we have that written in Saco code, or is it more we're relying, Saco's code officers relying on state fire codes?
Well, the fire department relies on the National NFPA Code, National Fire Protection Association, as a reference. The same code that's adopted by the state. We're on the same page with that.
Emily, did you have something to add?
I just want to add that when we get a business license, we have an electronic system internally, gets sent around to the different reviewing departments, and the code office will then look at the use and make sure that the use is allowable under our table of permitted uses in our zoning code. So that's the, some of the local review that happens as well.
Okay, so any other board discussion? I think, Chris, so far, I think I had a specific request to you about striping the entire lot with all of the parking spaces you're providing?
Yes, yeah, we can add that to the plans.
Okay. And then, board members, we had a lot of discussion about design guidelines, so we just need to figure out what direction we're taking this. Joyce?
Yeah, I mean, I prefer to address it before we make an approval, simply because otherwise you're going to have to come back anyway.
I agree with that.
Okay, Glenn?
Yeah, I mean, I'm feeling very Matt provincial here now, but...
We all need to do him justice.
Yeah.
You got to ask photometric plans, Rob. Photometric plans.
Beyond, no, but beyond, yeah, we haven't even got close to lighting, but I would, I would think that, I would think that there'd be more either market this building as a, to be built to, build to suit kind of thing, or some way to where you, there's a potential tenant or tenants, or types of, types of tenant, you know, just seems like there needs to be more something concrete, so you can then say, here's what it's going to look like on the outside, you know? And this is the type of business going in. I think that maybe to Kelly's comments, it should be, we maybe need to work a little stronger on our code with regards to what's going in these buildings. But it seems like there's some checks in place to catch that. But just as far as, like, build a building, I mean, you're saying striping it, who's going to move in here and what do they need to have for striping, right? Yeah, is there ADA issues? Well, it's a grade level, though, so, you know, they can deal with that. But, yeah, you may have to pop up with a couple, three or four ADA, you know, handicap parking. Again, depending on type of business, amount of employees, stuff like that. I'm less worried about the mechanicals, we can deal with that and screen that as they need it. But from a look and feel, and maybe somebody moves in here and says, I want two doors, not six, and so on. I just think it'd be, yeah.
I think, for me, the uses within the building are going to be within our zoning ordinance. That's in place already. So in my mind, this is no different from someone building out a restaurant space and not knowing if it's going to be a coffee shop, or a cocktail bar, or a full family-friendly restaurant, or a small upscale place. And so I think there's some design components that can go into place here that will be appropriate and welcomed by any tenant that's going to fall under this umbrella, in the same way a restaurant needs some curb appeal to it. So I agree with Joyce. I think it would be great if we could take it all in one step. So I think if we do it that way, we'd be looking at tabling this and having the applicant come back with some revisions, knowing that they'd be probably universal revisions, and then obviously we'll be understanding if there's future amendments based on a particular applicant that goes in there and wants to really put, you know, their custom brand on it.
Right, I mean, if you got a building that's being built, but then, okay, a tenant walks in and says, we want to punch seven windows in the wall, let's do that, you know? But it's generic enough, but to do that and to be flexible, but at the same time to have some kind of, as you say, look and feel on the outside, that would be reasonably acceptable by most, and adaptable and flexible by most. I mean, I can see where they don't want to build a door in the center and have seven doors on the right, this height, somebody may want something different as far as their configuration goes. But, yeah, I think we have to have a little bit more than just black lines.
Yep. Okay, any other comments? So, Chris, questions for us right now? I know we just kind of all piggybacked on one common request to you.
Yeah, we'll definitely advance the building drawings and come back with drawings that meet the town ordinance, the city ordinance. I guess I did have a question to Emily, if there was anything further on the traffic. I know that was one of the discussion items. We did provide a traffic memo and trip generation memo that was reviewed by the review consultant. They asked that some traffic counts be conducted on the site. Those traffic counts were conducted, and those counts confirmed that there's not a hundred trips in the peak hour. That was when the business was still operational in the corner, and that meaning that their traffic movement permit was not required. I don't know if there was anything further on that discussion-wise.
Madam Chair, would you like me to? So we did receive the final review from Diane Morabito with her traffic peer review, and so we just included a note in here that she, her comments had all been addressed. Her traffic peer review memo is on page seventeen of the July eighteenth, I believe, meeting packet.
Could I just make a comment? I hate the peak hour stuff. I hate it. Why can't we just tell us how many cars are expected in and out of that place during the day? I just have to say it, I'm sorry. They keep, they always say, it's very deceiving, I think, when you say peak hours, because more than a hundred and thirty-four cars are going to go through that driveway during the day. We know that. Why do we have to focus on that? It's like, oh, it's okay, it's only a hundred and thirty-four cars.
Because they're looking at clogging the roads during peak hours, I suppose, and that's all they care about. I mean, and they could probably give us both. This is how many trips we anticipate per day, and here's how many trips during the peak hour.
Yeah, it could depend on the business, too. You got a business that comes in that's super active between four AM and six AM, and they put two hundred and fifty cars through there, non-peak hours, right? But they're still going through there because they're loading trucks to distribute to grocery stores or something.
Yeah, I mean, Reidy Seafood was like that. Their peak hours are different than average and ever recovery.
Peak hours, I feel like, are becoming five AM to ten AM, right? There's no, there's no, you can't say anymore. It's like, oh, it's between seven and eight. It's not, it's, things are different these days.
Madam Chair? Would it be helpful, maybe, that we have a workshop item on traffic on another night? Because this is really, we're really talking about an application tonight. I appreciate the comments. We look at peak hours to figure out when a traffic movement permit is needed, so that's some of the things that we look at. But I'd be happy to organize something in the future, keep it on the list for when we have a little more time, maybe more toward the winter, to talk about traffic in general.
That sounds good.
My apologies.
No, it's a good point.
Nothing against you. You or your project, nothing against you.
I will note that we did, in the traffic memorandum provided, we did note the anticipated number of total trips during a weekday in that memo.
So at this point, we're going to potentially table this until drawings can be advanced to further level of detail?
Yeah, and I think if we leave the future meeting date TBD, correct, Emily?
All right, that was a motion, then. So I move that we table this until drawings can be further advanced at a date to be determined.
Thank you for the motion, Rob. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you for the second, Matt D. Any further discussion? Not hearing any on call for votes, starting with Matt D.
Yes.
Joyce?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Glenn?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes as well. Motion passes five zero. Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
Okay, board members, it's eight fifty-five, so I need to turn to you now so we can have a discussion about how we're handling the rest of the evening.
I think we finish it.
We have two more applications, though.
Hey.
Two more public hearings, two more applications. I'd be in favor of ending at nine forty-five sharp. Not sure how anyone else is feeling tonight. I know we are getting to the point where we're probably going to be adding another meeting to our fall agenda just to get caught up, so we're here right now, and I'd be willing to stick around till nine forty-five.
Yeah, I'd agree with that. I wouldn't want to go any later than that. So I don't know what that means for our last applicant.
Yeah, I think they're being very patient and hopeful. Okay, so Austin, I'll turn to you now. So the next item on our agenda is preliminary subdivision review for fifty and fifty-two Jenkins Road, which is map eighty-nine lots five and six in the WR and RP zones. This is going to be called the Amari Springs subdivision, and the applicant is being represented by BH two M. So Emily, we will start with a staff overview.
Thank you. The application was, well, as an overview, this is a twenty-five lot residential subdivision, public waters, city sewer, associated site improvements off Jenkins. We started this review on August first, when the board found the application complete, held a public hearing, and scheduled a site walk. The application review and public hearing were then continued to this evening. On August ninth, the board held the site walk, and then I think you're going to discuss the site walk tonight, is my thought here. Joe Laverrier, our city engineer, has been offering review comments on the application materials, and there have been responses received as well. And the updated information on August tenth, we received some responses and included those in the meeting packet.
Great, thank you, Emily. Austin, anything else to add to updates?
Well, thanks for seeing me tonight. Appreciate it. It's my understanding with talking to Walter this afternoon, who is the project manager, and for those of you who don't know me, my name's Austin Fagan with BH two M, representing the applicant, Diversicare Development. All items within the memo that are called for, including, let's see, we have something on, a comment on open space, which we did provide documentation that the truck, whatever entity that it was offered to was not interested, just due to the small size of the open space that was being offered. Existing tree clearing limits are a comment that we have in the memo. We do have a grading sheet for the plan, which shows, you know, forested buffers to be kept, areas that'll be open space, areas to not be cut due to resource protection. So I feel as if we may meet that qualification, but that's your interpretation, I suppose. Additionally, on top of that, we did supply both, or multiple ability to serve for main water. We gave the correspondence with the owners of fifty and fifty-two Jenkins Road, explaining that they understand that they'll have to come off of Amari Court and Dupie Drive with their driveways. And then, I believe, we also submitted a review from Maine Historic Preservation Commission and financial and technical capacity for the project. At this time, I believe the only outstanding comment from the city engineer that has not been addressed is the sidewalk, which we talked about at the site walk. So the site walk was held on the ninth, as Emily said. A few of the board members, and Emily and Shannon were at the site walk. We did walk the whole property, looked at, you know, existing site conditions, questions and comments from the previous public hearing, and I believe we covered a lot of those, including, you know, larger trees that we're looking to be documented. Most of them are large and dying or in the interior of the property where they can't be saved due to grading, just needing to build this property up in order to make stormwater work. Other than that, if we could come to a conclusion on the sidewalk, I don't know if that's something that needs to be done prior to preliminary approval. But I believe, other than that, we should be good to go. Thank you.
Thank you for those updates. So maybe we take a second and discuss the site walk. So there were a few of us present that evening, and a few more members here this evening weren't, but maybe we'll just take turns sharing out information that we remember from that night. And then I know that prior to a future meeting on this, Emily will be actually compiling a site walk memo that has detailed minutes, if you will, from the site walk, plus maybe a few photos. So as you said, we met at the beginning of the site, closest to Jenkins Road. We walked along the start of the lot, and you did point out to us where Dupie was coming out on Jenkins and where Amari Court was coming out on Jenkins. We discussed the fifty and fifty-two Jenkins lots that are kind of in the middle there. And then we started to work our way back. My memory is that we first walked along basically what will be Amari Court, and with the goal of seeing how the buffering was between lots fifteen, fourteen, thirteen, and the abutting properties. At that point, we did kind of stop and discuss as a group that we had walked a good way into the lot and noticed that the tree growth seemed to be fairly consistent through there. And I think at that point, we did start to really pay attention to the larger trees that were there and how they were doing health-wise and the number of them. Board members, any want to jump in?
I'll pop in. Not, fewer large trees than we expected. It looked like the place hadn't been logged, perhaps ever. And the large trees that we did see, almost all of them looked like they were dying or dead. They did not, they did not look like healthy forest. They looked like they could potentially be hazardous if they were left on site. The other thing I noted was, even though it's been a very wet summer, really no obvious wetlands, except at one spot along Sullivan where there was standing water. And that was surprising that we didn't get our feet wet, because we always do, every site walk ever.
Well, in that area, Sullivan was off the site.
Right, and it's fairly level overall, too, but seemed fairly level and very well-drained soil. And goes back a lot further than one would expect from seeing the place from the road.
Yeah, I think the spacing of the lot surprised me, too, on the face of the earth.
Yeah.
We walked quite a ways in when I think we got to the center of lot fourteen, and I was surprised that we weren't at the center of lot eleven at that point, so, yep. Anything else, Glenn?
Yeah, Madam Chair, I concur with what you both ladies said. There weren't many large trees there that I would call alive. And it seems like there was going to be buffering left in place. We did look at the Dupie Foundation and determined that foundation is existing and is not in compliance with setbacks. I think they're going to rip that out of the ground.
That is correct.
Yep.
Right, that's number fifty-two, not Dupie's lot, but number fifty-two.
Even though it's not in the subdivision, I guess that's part of the development project. No, they're going to put one, a new house there, it's just going to comply with setbacks.
The same developers rebuilding that property.
Correct.
Yeah, and I think, I mean, we discussed Robert Dupie's property, and his driveway comes in off Jenkins Road, right about where Dupie Drive's going to be. So we're assuming that he's going to be connecting his driveway to Dupie Drive also.
Correct.
I guess I, I'm sorry, Joyce.
Oh, I was just going to say, I don't think that was mentioned initially, when you first came in.
I guess I got kind of lost with what we discussed, well, I didn't get lost, we just stopped discussing it, crosswalk.
Yeah, I think that's worth discussing as a group tonight. We did walk along the Jenkins frontage and really pay attention to how a pedestrian might act coming out of this subdivision.
Is there a sidewalk on either side of the road there?
It's across from this, on
On the
The other side of Jenkins.
There is a sidewalk there?
Yes.
Yeah, the whole way up to Country Woods. And one of the things that apparently the city had suggested was build a sidewalk from Dupie?
It would be
Yes, from Dupie to Sullivan. And our thought was, in general, or the consensus was, that's not the way that the average person would be walking out of there. The average person would probably be walking down to Hillview Variety and/or Saco Middle School.
Right.
So it's incredibly unlikely that someone's going to walk up the sidewalk to Sullivan and cross at a crosswalk, and then walk back down to Hillview Avenue. They're going to cross the road.
It would add a good eight minutes if you're trying to get
Right, so you're suggesting doing a crosswalk at Amari or Dupie Drive or something like that?
Amari is pretty close, too, as you can see at the bottom of the map, Davis Drive, which is a private road. So yeah, having a, you know, having a crosswalk from Amari to get to the sidewalk where people would actually more likely use it.
So since everybody likes to put crosswalks at streets, do we do it at Amari? Do we put a little bit as a sidewalk along that city?
Yeah, we stood at the corner of that city.
City property and then cut it across to Davis Drive there?
Yeah, and I think one of the outstanding questions was how Joe Loveria would feel about that. Emily, I don't know if you heard anything on that.
And then, wouldn't you connect Dupie and Amari with a sidewalk the whole way and then just run it over to Davis? Is that sort of what you'd?
Yeah, so currently, there's a thirty-foot, what we show is a city of Saco easement on the right-hand side of lots seventeen and twenty-five, which is where there'd be intentions of a cross-country sidewalk are at the moment to get from Dupie over to Amari Court.
So Rob, if you live in lot one, you're going to cut to the side of twenty-five and seventeen, behind fifty and fifty-two Jenkins, and then walk to Amari? Yep. So yeah, Emily, any city updates on our thoughts on crosswalks?
My apologies, I was not able to connect with Joe
That's fine.
in the span of from the ninth to now.
So on that twenty-two-foot easement, what are you going to put there, just grass?
The, so the easement that's shown next to twenty-five and seventeen, it's, right now, it's proposed as a paved walk, I believe.
No, that would be good, yeah.
But town, a city maintained, or no?
The, it would be dedicated to the city, so both the roads and that portion of sidewalk.
Nice, they're going to like that. They're going to love that one.
And I was going to ask, is there a, I can't remember, is there a sidewalk that goes around the cul-de-sac within the development?
There is.
Internal, yep.
Yeah, so internally, you can walk around?
There's complete internal connectivity with that cross-country sidewalk.
Okay, good.
Yeah, so our thought when we were standing there was, if I'm a resident within this subdivision looking to just get some exercise, right? I may be able to still cross Jenkins down in the bottom right corner, across to that Davis Drive, and still head, I think it's north, on Jenkins towards Sullivan and those other subdivisions, where you could then kind of continue walking through established subdivisions. But really, the majority, I think, of pedestrians that head down towards Hillview and Saco Middle aren't going to, like we've been saying, take an extra eight minutes for safety to go up and around. They're just going to run across Jenkins.
Yeah, they're going to cut across and go.
And pretty good sightlines there, too.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Emily, the only other note I think is worth making for the site walk minutes when we get there is that we didn't have anyone from the public attend.
And that there's already a foundation at fifty Jenkins? But that's a new foundation, not the one shown on the plan, right?
Correct. The new foundation has had a permit pulled through the code office.
So that's a new one that meets setbacks?
Yes.
Built as just a separate standalone project, the fifty Jenkins?
It is owned separately from the overall parcel. It's already been sold out along with fifty-two. But we do have correspondence saying that they understand that they need to meet the requirements of the new subdivision.
Emily?
They will not be subject to any homeowners association.
Within the subdivision, there's no sidewalks, correct?
Within the subdivision, there are sidewalks connecting every single lot.
Okay.
The house shape at fifty that's being built, is that that shape that you have silhouette there? It looks different.
That is the old silhouette. So at fifty and fifty-two, what you see in the darker gray color, those are what were there prior to development of the subdivision.
Yeah, you're going to put something in the middle of them, not on the edge.
Correct.
Okay, so again, people walking out of here are going to, in some way, either, like Dupie Drive can do that cut across behind fifty and fifty-two, and then everybody come down, Amari Court comes down, Amari Court, then we're going to put
Hopefully.
Potentially a sidewalk that would go along that city of Saco property and then cut across the street there.
Maybe.
Right. Pending review of Mr. Loveria. But I mean, that's kind of the concept there, and then once you get on to the right side of Jenkins, you can go north or south. Okay. They're going to love that internal one.
Emily, something to add?
I just want to say that I appreciate the follow-up from the applicant on the correspondence from the other property owners. I would just point out that for one twenty-four Buxton, which had a similar situation, I actually required a signed letter with a, you know, with a signature from the homeowners, not just an email. So I'm hopeful that maybe as part of going forward, anything else with the conceptual design of the sidewalk, we can also ask for signed letters from the homeowners or from the new owners.
Okay, so at the site walk, we did explain, even though there was no one there from the public, that we would be hosting this meeting tonight and that the public hearing would be reopened and continued.
Reopen the public hearing?
Thank you for the motion, Joyce. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you for the second. Rob, I'll call for a vote on reopening the hearing, starting with Matt D.
Yes.
Joyce?
Yes.
Rob? Glenn?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes as well. Motion passes five zero. So we have reopened a public hearing on this item, which again is preliminary subdivision review for fifty and fifty-two Jenkins Road, which is map eighty-nine lots five and six in the WR and RP zones. If you've joined us this evening to speak on this item, you're welcome to come forward now and just start with your name and address for our records.
Chelsea Hill, one zero eight Bradley Street. I have read the traffic impact review for Amari Springs submitted by Sewell. I'm disappointed to yet again see a traffic impact review that includes only protection of how quickly we can move vehicles through a given area and which solely relies on counting cars in the given area. I again urge the planning board to require its traffic engineering staff to consider all right-of-way users. We simply cannot align our comprehensive plan if we do not start collecting, analyzing, and planning to data that includes all other roadway users besides motorized conveyance. Nowhere in the review document does the peer reviewer mention level of service conditions or impacts to bicycles or pedestrians on Jenkins Road. This tells me that the applicant was not required to submit any traffic impact analysis documentation for any right-of-way users other than vehicles, meaning these users are ignored by the city on this roadway. I was really excited to hear people talk about the sidewalks during the site walk. I apologize that I was not able to make it. There is a sidewalk, as we've already stated, on the side of the roadway, opposite the proposed development site. This means that families which move into these homes will have to cross a busier, higher-speed roadway that, according to Maine DOT, has an average annual daily traffic count of three thousand six hundred vehicles per day in 2019, which is the most recent counts available from the state. This equates to, if we count from six AM to ten PM, when most traffic occurs, two hundred and twenty-five vehicles per hour, or nearly four vehicles per minute. We know traffic is not evenly distributed, so this number likely skyrocket during peak traffic on this roadway. But since I do not believe a traffic analysis has been performed on the roadway, we don't really know how much traffic is flowing. In reviewing a Saco Police Department analysis, which was conducted on April twenty-first, 2021, although it was on Ferry Road, the nearest crossroad was Jenkins. The highest recorded speed in this area was eighty-nine miles per hour. Seventy percent of the traffic recorded in that data collection effort was traveling faster than forty miles per hour. We know that Jenkins Road, according to the peer review assessment, is posted at forty miles per hour. We can make an assumption, although it should be tested through current data collection, that this road experiences the same traffic conditions. This developer does not appear to be proposing any kind of crossing, although we did just talk about it, lighted crossing, to bring residents of this new development to the sidewalk on the opposing side of the street. I urge the planning board to require a marked lighted crossing at either Amari or Dupree Drives or both, so that these people can get from the roadways, which hopefully have their own internal sidewalks, which they do, because we covered that already, that terminate at the roadway, so they can cross the existing sidewalk. My son used to attend daycare at a church just down the street from this proposed location, and they would cross the church street. They would cross from the church across Jenkins to get to a small neighborhood park on Ryan Drive. It made me extremely nervous to know that they crossed here, even though the daycare staff was very safe. Again, I urge the planning board to require this developer to either put two pedestrian hybrid beacons. So this is a very specific request. A pedestrian hybrid beacon is a specific traffic control device that's used for high-speed, multi-lane roadways where there's a long sight distance. It gives the drivers a warning that they should expect to slow down when a person pushes the button. Then the person is supposed to wait until the button turns a solid color so that they can cross safely. This gives drivers a chance to slow down before the person starts crossing the street. You could do this in one location or two locations, one set at Amari and one set at Dupree, but that would be a little bit silly. So you'd probably want to do what you described, which is join the two drives and then do one crossing to the sidewalk. It's just very important to note that this is different than a regular pedestrian-activated beacon that you would see in town, like by Rennie's. It's specifically designed for roadways like this. Twenty-six thousand dollars is not enough money to install one of these devices. This roadway is likely an appropriate location for the solution, and I hope that you'll consider requiring the developer to install this device. Thank you.
Hi again, Kelly Archer, one eighty-five Bradley Street. I am going to echo and say ditto to everything that the previous speaker just said. In my opinion, I continue, I consider her very much the expert as far as the TMP. I have been involved with Randi Illian at the state level and also Sewell, which one, one board member had asked a previous attorney how long that they have been part of Saco, and it was two to three years, where Sewell has been here for seventeen years. And the definition with TMP, MDOT, says all multimodal. I have seen so many different reports, not just in Saco, that do not consider the bike and pedestrian or different types of vehicles. The counts are wrong. They're outdated. I believe that they're outdated manuals that they're using, and we need to consider the bike, the pedestrian, every different type of multimodal on our streets and our sidewalks for the safety for everyone. And I definitely agree with all the findings that she had found as far as Jenkins roads and the speeds. We all know that. We've been there. We need to have the safety. We need to have these safety measurements put in place, and this is what the planning board can do. Thank you.
Okay, once again, our room's pretty sparse tonight, so just turning to everyone here, if you're with us this evening to speak on this item, I welcome you to come forward now.
Madam Chair, not seeing anyone else coming forward, I wish to close the public hearing.
Thank you for the motion, Joyce. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you for the second, Rob. I'll call for a vote, starting with Matt D.
Yes.
Joyce?
Yes.
Rob? Glenn? And I'll vote yes as well. Motion passes five zero. Okay, back to board discussion. So Emily, it seems like next steps on this crosswalk and sidewalk configuration is to have Joe weigh in on it. Is that correct?
Yes, I think you should have Joe weigh in on the proposed option from the site walk, and then maybe have staff follow up with the applicant accordingly.
That would be great.
Can someone look at this hybrid beacon?
Yeah, so maybe within the request to Joe is just his thoughts on that proposed beacon as well.
Yep. If the board is amenable, I'd also like to ask that signed letters be submitted by the owners.
We can make that happen whether required or not.
Yeah, of fifty and fifty-two and not the, or you're talking about the existing Dupie House as well?
Primarily fifty and fifty-two.
Okay. Austin, only one of those has transferred ownership, right?
I don't know that off the top of my head, to be honest with you.
Or it's just being built?
At least one of them has been.
Yeah, okay.
And based on the letter from who it came from, I would assume both have been sold, or else the applicant would have been able to sign off on one of them.
Yeah, okay. Okay.
Now, just because I have to ask, are these items that will not allow a preliminary approval, where they are minor in nature? Other than, you know, figuring out what Joe wants us to do with the sidewalk and getting those letters?
I think my understanding is we should have the sidewalk configuration and crosswalk configuration shown on a preliminary plan. I think the letters, that could be a final review component. My inclination is that we take care of the sidewalk/crosswalk issue at preliminary. Yeah, and if it's possible. I think that's, the other outstanding thing is, the city has to decide if that's something that's going to be going in on Jenkins Road, too.
So the city's got to weigh in on that.
It's above us, but I think we've, we have enough information now for Emily to pass along from everything we've discussed. Yeah. Okay, otherwise, board members, so back to, obviously, at our first meeting, there was a note made in the public hearing about the larger trees on site. I think after I left the site walk personally, I no longer felt like that was something we needed to be following up on. They just, there really weren't a tremendous amount of them, and they were not healthy at all. So, okay. And then as far as buffering, we kind of talked at the site walk as well, that a lot of the city easement areas on the boundaries, up on the Sullivan side and then on the bottom side along Chisholm, that really needs to be cleared for stormwater management, correct?
Accurate, yes.
Okay. And there's an existing stormwater issue on Sullivan off-site that will somehow be folded into the mix here to hopefully be addressed. that will somehow be folded into the mix here to hopefully be addressed within what you're doing.
Yes, the applicant is at least providing an outlet where that can be mitigated to the best possible course of action.
Okay. Okay, so Emily, what other outstanding items do we have besides what we just discussed?
You mentioned the letters. Emily, Official Wildlife, Maine Historic Preservation, Natural Areas Program. Also, are street trees, I don't see street trees shown on this, but I assume Parks and Rec is requiring street trees.
Yes, and we do have street trees shown and detailed on the roadway sheets, which would be three through five, I believe, or three through six. Let's see if I can find a note. Street tree, C note three, and then note three says, "Street trees shall be a combination of red oak and white oak. Two-and-a-half-inch minimum caliper species shall be planted in an altering pattern at 50 feet on center along both sides of the road." And in terms of the IFNW and Maine Natural Areas Program, we did provide the maps from the IFNW that they provide for their GIS system, and there are no natural resources that they have delineated on the site. And Maine Natural Areas Program, I don't know if that's a carryover from an old portion of the ordinance, but as long as I've been doing this, there's really no response from them. I don't think they have funding to respond to anything, so usually we'll just get a letter that says we do not have the funding to look into this. So I'm not sure if that's still a, an active requirement that you get or what the deal is.
Yeah, we have seen correspondence from them.
Okay. So is that something that everybody would still like to see, even though there are no delineated natural resources on any of their GIS maps or anything of that nature? And we have had a natural resource delineation for the spring that was from Mark Sensi that's in the Resource Protection Zone?
We usually want information about historic areas and possible artifacts.
In tonight's meeting packet, there was a response from Maine Historic Preservation Commission in the additional meeting packet received after the distribution of the full document.
Yeah, my apologies, that was a late arrival.
Our apologies for that.
Okay, anything else?
That's it from my end.
Thank you.
Okay, so we do need to make a motion on this for a future meeting to be determined, Emily, or a future date specifically?
You, if the applicant feels that we can get the materials maybe a week or two before, at least a week before September 5th, then you can go to September 5th. Otherwise, a date to be determined.
I feel like a lot of this is contingent on Joe's schedule.
Yeah, the city, yeah.
So maybe we could continue to the nearest applicable.
To next available meeting, yeah.
So that is September 5th?
Okay. And then if it's not prepared by then, we'll just bump it again?
Yep.
Okay.
So I move to continue application review to the September 5th, 2023 Planning Board Meeting.
Thank you for the motion, Joyce. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you for the second, Rob. I'll call for a vote on continuing, starting with Matt D.
Yes.
Joyce?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Glenn? And I'll vote yes as well. Motion passes five, zero. Thank you, Austin.
Thank you all for your time.
Before we start the, the next item, can I just ask for an official motion that we're going beyond 9:30?
Oh, yeah, sure.
Thank you.
Someone want to make a motion? That we're taking this up?
Yeah, a move that we are continuing past 9:30, taking up the last item that is on tonight's agenda.
Thank you for the motion, Rob. Is there a second?
Second.
Call for a vote, starting with Matt D.
Yes.
Joyce?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Glenn? And I'll vote yes as well. Motion passes five, zero. So with that said, the last item on our agenda that we're starting this evening is a conditional use review for 265 North Street, which is tax map 54, Lot 8, in the MDR zone. This is Blue Elephant Catering. So Emily, we'll start with a staff introduction from you and move forward from there.
Thank you. So Blue Elephant Catering had come to the city previously for a contract zone request. The overview is applicant Arcan properties request conditional use review following provisions of the Arcan Contract Zone and the city, that the city council approved in March 2023. This proposal is to move the existing catering operations for Blue Elephant at Pepperell Square to 265 North Street. Additionally, the contract zone agreement provides the option for events to be held on-site, limited to no more than 75 people, with some restrictions on event options. Planning staff has included the contract zone in this meeting packet along with documentation submitted during planning board review and city council review of the contract zone process. We've also included meeting dates where these were reviewed. The applicant has submitted a one-waiver request to the submission of survey plans. There's really not much changing on-site at all. In fact, the only thing they're really proposing to have changed is a, is a gravel path or gravel area to increase the width of the travel way. So those are the main items. We did receive department reviews that you see there, and we sent this for peer review by Diane Morabito. We also took a site walk out, Joel O'Verrier and I, to look at parking and the overall existing conditions, and we recommend that the dumpster location be finalized as part of further review or in the future by staff, however the planning board chooses.
Great, thank you, Emily. So one waiver request here for submission of a survey. So board members, any questions in regards to the waiver request? And if not, I'll look for a motion.
I move to approve the waiver request to submission of survey plans for 265 North Street.
Thank you for the motion, Joyce. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Glenn?
Rob.
Rob? Sorry. I will call for a vote on the waiver request, starting with Matt D.
Yes.
Joyce?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Glenn? And I'll vote yes as well. Motion passes five, zero to grant the waiver. Okay, and now in regards to application completeness, any questions for city staff?
I move to find the application for conditional use review for 265 North Street, complete.
Thank you for the motion, Joyce. Is there a second? Thank you for the second, Glenn. I'll call for a vote, starting with Matt D.
Yes.
Joyce?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Glenn? And I'll vote yes as well. Motion passes five, zero to find the application, complete. Okay, let's now turn to the applicant for any info you want to add to what Emily gave us for an overview. If nothing to add, you can just introduce yourself in case we have questions.
Yeah, Edward Arcan, Arcan Properties, 265 North Street. And I don't have anything to add. Staff's done a great job, and appreciate you guys staying a little extra for us to get this done tonight.
Great. Okay, so.
Any questions?
Yeah, board members, any questions right now?
Well, there was a question about how many people you were going to have at some of these events and whether you'd have adequate parking with 50 spaces. So what's the, is this the, the contract zone allows you to have events for up to 75 people?
Yep, 75 people is what it was approved.
So that's attendees plus staff?
Yep. Well, it's 75 guests and then we have staff, staff of another probably six to eight. Staff would be adequate for an event that size.
And in your experience, have you had issues with, I know there was a mention of people, everybody showing up in their own cars? So potentially having 75 cars on-site? With 50 spaces?
Well, it's probably better to address that.
Also, probably for, for Blue Elephant, so 75 guests wouldn't be bringing 75 cars. That would be 35 cars, because people would either double up or couples. So you're not looking at everybody individually coming out. That's my experience with working in the state of Maine at various venues. And then with staff, it would be literally either my car and the chef and the people that are working, and that's it. My goal is to make arrangements with the school that is closed on Saturday and Sunday and saying, hey, would you let me use your parking lot for X amount of dollars if they allow that? I think that's the easiest bet, if not using the XL, which I'm very friendly with everybody there, and just bringing our people back in one car. So we've made arrangements for that as well.
Joyce, any other questions on that? Rob?
So we've advertised this as a public hearing, correct?
Yes, correct.
I move to open the public hearing for 265 North Street Conditional Use Review.
Thank you for the motion, Rob. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you for the second, Joyce. I'll call for a vote on opening the hearing, starting with Matt D.
Yes.
Joyce?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Glenn? And I'll vote yes as well. Motion passes five, zero. So if you've joined us this evening to speak on this item, again, this is a conditional use review for 265 North Street, tax map 54, Lot 8, in the MDR zone. You're welcome to come forward now and just start with your name and address for our record. Yeah, you can sit down for a minute, thank you.
Busy night, Kelly Archer, 185 Bradley Street. In reading this application and being at the council when the contract zone agreement back on March, I believe, 23rd of this year, I, I was pleased and spoke at public comment that there would be no parking on the street in front of their, their business. I do have a concern, when I read the CCA, and I'm directing it a little bit to you to bring back for conversation to the council and also for the planning board, and to get more clarification and understanding in this, is it's agreed upon that they would not park in front. However, there's a $6,000 fee in that contract zone that was, I'm sorry, the traffic impact of the area. Applicants shall pay a traffic impact fee of $6,000 to the city of Saco prior to building permit issuance for the interior renovations. This fee may offset any additional traffic impact fees assessed during the planning board review process. I'm hoping that there's no extra impact fees that you're going to have, and I'm requesting that you have a good discussion about, can they waive not only the waiver that they just did for the 18 feet, but can you waive the $6,000? The reason for that is on August 4th and 5th, and there's other instances where across the street from there, they have a ballpark. And they park from Franklin all the way down to Tasker. I live on Bradley Street. I go by there. They're parked there, but they're also parked to the, to the, butter to the Saco Fire Station, down to the store towards the railroad tracks. And if it's a double game, so on Saturday and Sunday, that was ju, the traffic was abnormal, but it's not them. It's the ballpark. So they are going to be doing things on Saturday, maybe Sunday, but their, their events are going to be on the weekends at the same time that Saco's having these ballpark games. I don't want them to be even, a passerby even consider that it's them that's causing this issue. It's not, it's the games. So do they need to pay a fee? Do they, do they need to do that part? When they are, I don't believe, in my heart of hearts, that they're ever going to have anyone come and park on the street, on North Street. They're going to go to the back parking lot. So I would like that to be a consideration. Other than that, I, I fully support everything that they're doing at this, and the contract zone. Thanks.
Okay, if anyone else has joined us this evening to speak on this item, you're welcome to come forward now.
Madam Chair, seeing no one else coming forward, I move to close the public hearing.
Thank you for the motion, Joyce. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you for the second, Matt D. I'll call for a vote on closing the hearing, starting with Matt D.
Yes.
Joyce?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Glenn?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes as well. Motion passes five, zero. Okay, so back to board discussion.
I, I hear what Kelly's saying about the $6,000 fee. I don't think, I'm assuming I'm right, that we can't.
Do we have the flex to do that and say?
Yeah, I mean, it's an agreement between the applicant and the council.
Madam Chair, if I may? Yes, that was a specific city council request, so the applicant would have to go to city council for the waiver.
I mean, I would agree with it, but at the same time, I don't think we can tell council what to do.
This, I believe the theory, I was actually asked to review the potential of a traffic impact fee, and the theory was that there'll be more cars on the road in that area. It was not relevant to parking on North, parking on the street. It was relevant to additional cars in the area. However, if someone wanted to request a waiver, it's through the city council. That would have to go through.
They, they would have to ask city council?
Correct.
Maybe we could call a few city councils and suggest it might be.
The applicant hasn't asked us for this. I just want to remind everyone.
All right, so we have had our, our public comment.
And just to clarify, I believe that would be an amendment to the contract zone, not necessarily a waiver.
Right.
Okay, so we have some, we have a dumpster location with some screening, correct, Emily, from your site visit?
So there is already a dumpster out there. What we're, what I'm just calling out is that we want to get clarity on where the dumpster is going to be on the site and then request that it be screened, which is something that we are happy to follow up with as staff.
Okay. And the applicant, you have no issues with that step? Okay, no issues there. And then we're adding some gravel to the existing travel way to widen it, and that was shown in blue on the plan, correct, Emily?
Yeah, on the left, left side of the driveway.
The concern previously that has been brought up over the years when we look at this property in the past was that, I have it up on the screen here, that this travel width is very narrow because of where the building is located and just, just how it is, how existing conditions are. So the city engineer and I did a, a site walk out there, met the applicants, and the city engineer took some measurements out on the site and then talked with the applicants about widening this area, which they were amenable to.
And by doing it with gravel, it's not impervious?
Yeah, we just thought it would be minimal disturbance.
Yeah.
Okay, and then as far as the traffic memo that we have, so I think the applicant just addressed that as far as their normal business use and the number of cars they are typically seeing for an event with 75 people. So board members, any other questions, comments on that? Nothing, Glenn?
I'm good.
Nothing, Rob?
No.
No, Joyce? No, Matt? Okay. Okay, so at this point, so Emily, this review would incorporate a finding, on the findings of fact, and on the conditional use review standards, one through nine, and then the conditions of approval, which you have drafted, one through eight total conditions, correct?
Correct.
Madam Chair, I move to adopt the draft findings of fact as presented by staff.
Thank you for the motion, Joyce. Is there a second?
Second. Rob?
Rob? Sorry.
You can separate us if you want.
I haven't seen you in so long. Thank you for the second, Rob. I'll call for a vote on the findings of fact motion, starting with Matt D. I'll call for a vote on the findings of fact motion, starting with Matt D.
Yes.
Joyce?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Glenn?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes as well. Motion passes five, zero to adopt the findings of fact. It's very helpful.
Madam Chair, I move to find that the elements of conditional use review, numbers one through nine, have been satisfied.
Thank you for the motion, Joyce.
I'll second that.
Thank you for the second, Rob. I'll call for a vote on the motion for conditional use review, one through nine, starting with Matt D.
Yes.
Joyce?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Glenn?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes as well. Motion passes five, zero.
And Madam Chair, I move to adopt the draft conditions of approval presented by city staff.
Thank you for the motion, Joyce. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you for the second, Matt D. I'll call for a vote, starting with Matt D.
Yes.
Joyce?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Glenn?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes as well. Motion passes five, zero. Okay, Emily, that was it for these, from this review? Okay, thank you, gentlemen. Okay, so it's nine forty-five on the dot. Emily, can we hold our staff updates for next meeting?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, so we will adjourn now, and we will see everyone on September 5th. Thank you all.